Good, welcome everyone to our April 15th, 2025 City Council Work Session. Our meetings are public and you're welcome to join us in person or by watching from the Council's Agenda page, Zoom, YouTube, or SLCTV. We hope you'll continue to join us in whatever manner you feel most comfortable. This is a work session meeting during which there is no public comment. Please join us tonight at our 7:00 PM formal meeting to share your comments. We of course welcome your feedback anytime by mail to PO Box 145476, Salt Lake City, Utah, 841145476, or by email at council comments at slc.gov, or via our 24-hour phone comment line, 801-535-7654. Comments that we receive on agenda topics are sent to all council members and posted on our website, slccouncil.com. The first item on our agenda is an ordinance for mixed-use zoning consolidation, zoning text and map amendment follow-up discussion. And we have the who's who of the Planning Department here at the table, Nick and our own Nick Tarbet. So, let's take it away if you're ready for us.
So, last week, the Council was able to get through about half of the straw polls. So, we have the first 11 you all had made decisions on. So, today, we're hoping to get through the last eight, two of which are new. One's a request that Planning sent after the hearing, excuse me, after the briefing. There was some new information they wanted the Council to consider. And then we did receive one more private request for a zoning amendment. So, we'll get to those. You should all have the straw polls printed out and on your desk so you can go through them. And then on the big screen is the presentation from Planning that adds a little more context, some visuals where needed. So, if we can just go to item 12, then just start stepping through them again if that works. The first one here, item 12, would be to modify the height limit for private directional signs from four feet to eight feet. Planning staff recommends making this change, supports this.
Okay, sorry, I'm pulling up notes to make sure I don't have any questions from myself. Yes, Councilmember Young.
What is a private directional sign?
So, if you had like a private street instead of a public street, many signs on there would be classified as a private directional sign. So, things like parking or directions to a parking area on the property. Yeah.
Got it, thank you.
Okay. Any other questions to this item? Okay.
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
Oh, yes, Councilmember Mono.
Thanks. So, are there, these are just signs that would be on private property? Or are they signs facing out to the public street? Like, like a monument sign would not be a directional sign, that'd be an advertising sign or?
Yeah, so these would be purely about directions to parking, things like that on the property. Monument signs would be regulated separately, which are allowed. But these private directional signs could be facing like a public right of way.
So, and then sometimes in like drive-through businesses, we'll see like, "Drive-through this way." And those typically are lower than eight feet. Is there a difference between those or would we now be seeing eight-foot tall? Like, for a king drive-through this direction?
Those could also go up as well with this.
Okay. And the reason for the change is just that? Have we been seeing issues with this for certain projects?
Yeah, they've wanted to be like a regular eye-level sign, but we've told them that has to be maximum four feet.
Okay.
Any other questions? Okay, anyone want to propose a straw poll?
Mr. Chair, I propose that, like, to take a straw poll on to modify the height limit of the private directional signs from four to eight feet.
Okay, that is four thumbs up or five thumbs up here. Okay, and then Councilmember Mono, okay, great. So, that is six to zero with Councilmember Pooey not present. Next.
Okay, item 13, there's actually four sub-points within here. And the map, the presentation on the big screen will show you where these properties are located. Planning staff is recommending the following changes for the, to be included in the final draft. The first one would be to allow the FBUN2 corners going to MU6 in the Central Ninth area.
Councilmember Mono, do you?
This, okay, I think I understand what's going on here. This is the corners in the current Form-Based Urban Neighborhood 2 zone that are already allowing additional height. So, rather than having it listed as MU5 with additional height, we're just changing it to MU6, right?
Correct. The weirdness here is that it talks about parcels on the corner being allowed up to 65 feet in height. But those parcels are kind of small in some cases. And so, you end up with a weird little sliver that go up to 65 feet. So, we're proposing just to increase that so that anything 165 feet from the corner can go up to 65 feet in height.
Oh, okay, so it's not just the corner, it's anything that has, okay, that's within 165 feet?
Yep.
Okay, I think that's fine. A lot of the buildings in that neighborhood already have that additional height and I think it's appropriate. So, that makes sense to me. And then I think it also simplifies the code I never really liked how we had that, those specific parcels called out, so I like that.
Lopez Chavez.
Thank you. And just to clarify, in the East Central area, again, it sounds like MU6. Was there a reason why it was just mistakenly identified as MU6 or?
It was a mistake. There's a weird line in there that says, "Properties next to zones that allow for taller development can go up to 90 feet," and we just missed that.
Okay, thank you. And I think the squaring up the block face is great, so thanks, I'm supportive.
All right. Does anyone have any questions about any of the other four sub-points? And if not, does someone want to propose a straw poll?
Sorry, Mr. Chair, I don't have the sheet in front of me. Is there, Nick, you said there were four sub-points to this one? I'm only seeing the two on the screen.
So.
Okay.
Yeah. Do you need us to read them?
I can see them now, I just see what's on the screen.
Okay.
Do you need us to read through them or?
Nope, I understand these.
Yeah, and we need to go back.
I'm ready to propose a straw poll if.
Okay, go ahead.
I propose a straw poll that we support 13.1 through 13.4.
Can we add something to that?
Oh, sure, yes.
On 13.3, on the Green Street 21st South, so the Planning Commission recommended leaving things as-is. And so, that would just keep FBUN1, which is a residential zone over a strip mall, which is a little odd. It makes it difficult for businesses to switch over to other uses. It also creates problems for signage. So, even though the Planning Commission recommended essentially keeping this as-is, we could remove that non-conformity by moving it over to one of the MU zones, MU3. We just want to offer that up as an option.
Oh, wait, okay, I think I remember this. This is right now because Planning Commission said to just leave it, it's proposed to be FBUN1, which is really single-family, smaller scale. Planning's original recommendation was to go to MU6, is that correct?
That's correct.
Over your screen. Okay. Thanks for reminding me of that. So, I'll modify my straw poll to support 13.1 through 13.4 with the exception of the properties along Green Street being changed to MU6 as shown in the map on the screen.
Okay. Everyone, okay, we got five thumbs up and? Councilmember Mono, I'm assuming you're a thumbs up?
Yes.
Okay.
Am I not on the screen?
No, we can only have either the.
Oh, got it, okay.
Either you or the.
I'll speak my vote out loud.
Thank you. That would be most helpful. Okay. 14, Public Notices.
Okay, this is pretty basic. This would align the city statute, city ordinance with changes that were made during the 2025 legislative session.
So, I want to include notices. And I remember that we passed an ordinance that, like, I want to say like four years ago, that required utility providers to give formal notice when they're putting in utilities. And I'm wondering if we can just make it so that for like the ease of everyone, if we can just make a similar requirement for ourselves and? Or is that advisable?
So, this change is because state law changed and mandated this new type of notice called ministerial. So, it's for zoning changes only.
Okay.
So, it wouldn't impact any of those other things. So, starting May 7th, we actually have to follow that anyway.
Oh.
So, that's, this is just making, removing any sort of confusion in our current code. This proposal initially included some changes to comply with state codes that changed last year regarding establishing what's called a geographic area for a Class B notice. And so, that was the initial change to 21810 that we're making. It doesn't affect any other type of notice, only for those things that are under state code require Class B, which are basically zoning amendments.
Okay. So, sorry if I'm making you repeat yourself, but? So, it says, "This year, the state introduced ministerial code changes that do not have to include mailed notices that the city would want to include in that section." Is, are you saying ministerial is the Class C and?
No, so, so I'll take a step back.
Okay.
In 2024, the State Legislature adopted new noticing requirements for updates to general plans and land use regulations. And it divided those into Class A and Class B. Class A are just general notices for things that don't affect a direct property, but generally apply to everything. Class B is something that had, that was specific to a property in a specific zoning district. So, if we're changing the rules of a zoning district, we'd have, we suddenly had to do a mailed notice to everyone within that district. And so, this year, a bunch of cities had issues with that. And so, this year, they adopted what's called the ministerial noticing requirement, which was meant to say if we're making a change that applies generally to an entire zoning district, multiple zoning districts, or things like process-related, those don't necess, those don't need to have a direct mailed notice. So, we're trying to capture both of those two things. Establishing what we define as a geographic area, which the state code last year asked us to do, and then bringing our noticing requirements up to accommodate the ministerial notice.
Okay, so what about when, so before the state law change, if we were making a change to, you know, we're making that kind of change that would now be a ministerial change, what would we do, have done prior to 2024? Would we have no notice or would we have done like a, what would we have done?
So, we weren't legally required to send a notice. We've done it on a case-by-case basis.
Okay.
Based on what we think the overall impact would be. So, there are some times where we've made a text change that impacts three or four zoning districts where like, you know, we're, like, our downtown, a good example is when we did all the downtown building height stuff. We ended up noticing every property owner in downtown because, one, it was relatively small and the changes were extensive. Whereas if we were going to change, for example, when we changed and eliminated a special exception process four years ago, we didn't notice every property owner because that would have been citywide and we felt like it was small enough changes that it didn't require it.
Okay. And so, the proposal is to keep doing what we're doing for these ministerials? Or is to say no, we're not going to do it for any of them?
So, it makes it so it's not required. That doesn't mean that we won't still do something. It just means that we're not required to do a mailed notice. There may be some instances where we still choose to. So, a good example, for example, if we're going to change the R1 stuff, that may be something that we want to notify everybody if we have the money for it. So, we don't want to lock ourselves into always having to do it no matter what.
Right. I guess my question is, does it say anywhere like, the city will give notice on these on a, you know, case-by-case basis? Or are we just going to leave it totally blank or totally silent?
So, it doesn't specifically state that we would do it on a case-by-case basis.
Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Yeah, thank you. Nick, according to state code, and I haven't read this, is it very specific to paper-based notification? Or is it electronic notification? Has that been updated yet?
So, the state code does require mailed notices. That's what we're dealing with. We're not dealing with any sort of electronic posting as required. Those things all stay in place.
And, and right now, the, is it also similar that like our current code is silent on whether we do this? It doesn't say that we do it on a case-by-case basis or anything like that?
That's correct.
Okay. I don't know, I guess just are there any like unintended consequences, I guess, to use one of their favorite phrases?
I think, I think if there are, there's things that we've been doing for as long as I've worked for the city, which is 17 years now, because that's the approach we've taken.
Okay.
So.
Okay. Well, I guess with that additional information, I'm, I'm comfortable with it. But if anyone wants to propose a straw poll?
Mr. Chair, I propose a straw poll that we approve the modifications of number 14.
Okay.
Good reading it all.
Okay, I'm seeing five thumbs up.
Thumbs up.
Okay, six thumbs up, thanks.
Okay, number 15 looks really big, and it kind of is. Councilmembers Pooey and Warren asked to meet with planning staff about concerns on the impact of off-street parking when some developments go in, the removal of off-street parking. And CAN staff, community neighborhood staff, provided some options that the council could consider, including that may address some of those issues. At this time, though, staff recommends that this would be better suited to be like a legislative action. If the council wants more information, some more research done on these, that the staff, planning staff would do that and come back with some recommendations. But including them in the MU right now could complicate things a little too much, so.
Thank you, I'd like to postpone these because when I read through this, it was very confusing. It's like, oh, like, you know, so my straw poll is that we hold off on number?
15.
15.
And would you, would, does the council want us to write a motion that would ask planning or CAN staff to do some more research and then come back with recommendations?
Can I actually ask for small groups? I know, I'm sorry, that's annoying for you all to have to do more. But I actually need to sit down and understand what the options are. I've either heard hyper-urbanistic things that say, "No cars ever, we're going to fix the world that way." And then I've heard hyper-developer, you know, like, the city has to put in, I need to know what realistic options are on this.
Yeah, I agree.
Okay, we can set those up for anyone.
Wasn't just me then.
Mr. Chair?
Yes, Councilmember Mono.
I, I'm supportive of holding on this, but I do want us to pass a legislative intent asking for this to be initiated. And I think it's relatively urgent. The more we're hearing, I think every council member is hearing about certain different things that are having, happening between with development and on-street parking. And so, I would really like for us to begin working on this. I think there are some pretty simple responses, but, or simple solutions, but they might require a change to just the process. I think right now, we have the fire department coming in sort of towards the end after a building is approved and then determining whether things, whether on-street parking needs to be removed. I would also like for us to be, to add into the legislative intent with the process, though, things like, there are certain projects I've heard of where it's not necessarily an on-street parking issue, but, for instance, we may say this particular project has a six-foot setback. So, they'll get through the planning process and the design process. And then later in the process, they, the fire department has said like, "We actually require an eight-foot setback for our ladder," whatever the case may be. And so, then that means that the product needs to be redone.
We lost you there right at the end. Can you hear us? Okay. Someone want to let him know that we, we kind of cut off there? And does anybody else have a question while we're waiting? Nope, okay. Does anybody want to make a straw poll based on what we did here from Councilmember Mono? Oh, shoot. Okay. Did everyone hear that? Okay. All right. So, that's five, maybe a zero.
Okay, number 16, we get into a few requests from the public here. Scott, if you go to the slide with these. This is a request to reason the property. Right now, it's proposed for MU5 and the. Right now it's proposed for MU5, and the owner and, um, some of the representatives of the properties in this area are requesting MU8 and for the properties identified on the straw poll.
I mean, I would like to, from planning, what?
Yeah, how did you arrive at MU5 there instead of MU8, which is across the street and immediately adjacent?
So those were mapped as part of a North Temple rezon a number of years ago. So those were in place and we just moved those straight across. If something allows 50 feet, we just moved it straight across the MU5, 60 feet, moved it straight across MU6. So that was the approach. We just kept thinking in place and didn't rezon individual properties to something else that they weren't already.
So, Councilmember Lopez Chavez?
Oh, thank you. Are the other parcels owned by different property owners, or it's just the allocated parcel in the yellow that is requesting the rezone?
It's a combination, there's a couple different owners involved in this. So this highlights the general area of these parcels, um, which come under different ownership.
Okay, and I'm just curious if somehow MU8 is going to create caste or impede on the other parcels for future development?
It would be no different than what like the existing zoning would already, the impact it would have on those parcels.
Okay, wait, so these are all on the south side?
Mm-hmm.
And a lot of these are on the, okay.
It's the corner where the old Payless shoes is, and I'm pretty sure it's continuously a head shop there.
Yeah. Okay. All right, any thoughts?
So the primary difference between these is height? They want to go higher?
Yep, it's about three more stories taller.
I mean, my height isn't the problem with what people are doing on North Temple. It's the fact that it's not responsive to literally any other thing that the west side needs. So I am inclined to say yes to density. I think density in places where we haven't been preempted from our taxation is really a good thing on North Temple. So if it's height, but I'd like, there are so many other things I'd like to put on North Temple to protect us.
I'm Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Mono, welcome back.
Just, thank you, my internet went out, sorry about that. Do, can planning staff just enlighten me on whether or not the North Temple, whatever small area master plans exist along North Temple, whether they, this change would be supported by those master plans? I don't, if you haven't done that research, that's fine, but.
Sorry, I'll just jump in. We are currently updating that community plan, so the North Temple Boulevard Plan is part of the Northwest Community Plan, and it'll be incorporated into that update that we're currently working on.
Right now, there's not a current plan at all, or it's just an old plan that doesn't?
It's an older plan. I can pull up the North Temple unless you know Daniel off the top of your head.
No, that's okay. It, it gives me the information.
I think it's transitional, but it's taking a minute to load, sorry.
With what we permitted in the places where we've been preempted, I think allowing the extra height here matches what we're allowing other people to do. So to me, it feels pretty logical. I do not love when the reason we would consider this is because it conforms to a developer's plan. I think I would love to see it conform to the neighbor's need or to other more compelling arguments, even though I get that this was requested by someone as part of your data collection and, and that's why we're shaping it.
We could, staff could come back, look at this small, look at the small area plan for it and let you know if it supports with that.
I, I actually think it's in the best interest for us to go higher on North Temple. I think it's going to be very important for us to densify and do what we can to maintain our autonomy as a city.
Lopez Chavez?
Yeah, there's some questions for actually Councilmember Petra. I'd love to understand how you perceive the setbacks on North Temple. That's been a concern that I've seen, just kind of based off of the development, the type of stuff of plans.
I couldn't really hear you, the setbacks and what?
Oh, just the, the front setbacks of development there.
We don't really have them right now. I mean, and so I don't know that it's a big issue. I think we are pretty urbanized over there, so I'm not going to make a huge deal. And Madison Park is directly behind this, the fairgrounds are catty-corner from it. We have the Folsom Corridor Trail that should be finished when the classification yard moves west, that's another opportunity. So I don't know that I need to worry about in that, on that thoroughfare that we preserve setbacks. I would like to look at what the future urban forestry looks like along these major thoroughfares or something like that.
So I was able to pull up the small area plan, and it is noted as transitional, which is what matches. Um, so we basically just implemented that North Temple plan when we rezoned for TSA. So the MU8 would be higher than what is slated in the area plan.
And to me, it doesn't, it no longer feels transitional, like when we had an immovable power plant that had been there for a century and we knew that was going to be flatland, then maybe there was something, but El Asadero is now surrounded by, what, eight floors? Like, we're not transitioning to anything, we're not protecting anything anymore, it's there.
Okay. Anyone want to propose some straw poll?
I would support this. As a matter of fact, we might even want to do the corner of 1000 and North Temple as well. I don't understand why that wouldn't be given the same height. So I definitely want to do this if, if planning thinks it's appropriate and I'm not because I've never built anything real in my life. Speaking out of turn, I, I think in my mind, it makes sense to just expand it the rest of that block.
All right, that's the proposal. Everyone show your thoughts.
Um, just to confirm, so both of those parcels now extending all the way to 1000 Western?
So I'm straw pulling definitely what's being asked and pending them saying that it's cool, granting permission for it to move one block over as well. I want to, can I delegate details to staff? Can I go back to Historic Landmark Commission?
I don't know if, if we necessarily have a strong opinion, so.
Yeah, I just want, I want both blocks. Can we just do both blocks?
Okay.
The only concern I would have is creating a block facade where everything's at the same height, but I think, yeah, I think there's still review and process, right?
And 1000 West is still pretty significantly wide, that I think, like, there's plenty of space for it to breathe, right? It's not going to be the Wind Canyon, so. And then the fairgrounds is across the street, so that will give us good reprieve as well. So, yeah, that's what I'm going to ask for.
Okay. Councilmember Young?
Yes.
Yes, okay.
I'm, yes.
Okay, that is six, zero.
Yeah.
Yes. Okay.
Okay, we got about four more. This one would add kennel as a permitted use is the request from the public. In the M2, 3, in the MU 2, 3, and 5, planning, the staff is recommending that be a conditional use instead of permitted.
Okay.
And the reason for conditional is just there may be some impacts to the neighborhood that you would want to be able to help mitigate.
Yeah, I'm supportive of this, so, yeah.
Yeah.
We have more dogs in the households than kids in Salt Lake City. Yeah, we need this. Okay, straw poll, support for this.
Councilmember Young?
I guess I don't understand. It says that zoning already allows a clinic as a permitted use. But the concern is that the veterinary clinic has kennels? What?
Not completely familiar with all the details of this particular constituent's concern, but, um, a clinic, a veterinary clinic could have animals there during the day, generally they're inside. The kennel generally may have activities outside as well, overnight as well, so it has potential for more noise impacts than just a veterinary clinic.
Right. I mean, with that reason, it seems like it might make sense that there are places where we would want to have a vet clinic, but we wouldn't want to have a kennel. So I don't know that we want to make a change to everything for that one thing.
So our original recommendation was, was not to put it in these lower-scale zones, might be closer to lower-scale residential areas, just out of caution because they can be very noisy.
Yeah.
But that does not fix this constituent's problem, because they want to locate in an MU2 zone, I believe.
And they don't want to, and the kennel is a conditional use?
We would recommend adding it as conditional, just so we could capture any noise impacts potentially if there are.
But adding it as a conditional, not as a permitted?
Not as permitted, correct.
They want a permitted.
They just want it at all, they, right now it's not allowed in the MU2.
Oh, okay. Okay, okay, sorry, I missed, got it, okay.
Mr. Chair, but can I ask?
Yeah, go ahead, Councilmember Mono.
Conditional uses, we still really are pretty limited by state law in denying a conditional use, is that correct?
Yeah.
So a conditional use is, as far as I understand from when I was on planning commission, effectively, um, the planning commission must approve a conditional use if the issues can be mitigated even somewhat. There's, there's, so it, it really is becoming a permitted use. Um, I'm not saying that I think it's not appropriate, but I'm not familiar with. I guess.
But making it a conditional use gives staff the ability to mitigate those potential impacts such as noise, smells, whatever is raised by a community?
I definitely think we should make it a conditional use. I just want to make sure that if we, that everyone's aware that we don't, it doesn't mean we would ever be able to deny it outright, but we can help mitigate some of the issues. So I think if we approve it, we should definitely prove it as conditional.
Yeah, and do you think that that, and what I hear you saying is you think that does give you enough like control to manage concerns that neighbors would have?
It typically does. We've denied conditional uses in the past when we haven't been able to mitigate those impacts.
Especially for a use like this, because we can limit the number of animals that could be present, so.
Perfect, okay, great. All right, anyone want to propose a straw poll?
I propose a straw poll that we make conditional use for MU2, 3, and 5 to match MU6, 8, and 11 as proposed in number 17.
Okay, all in favor, or anyone?
Yes.
Any thoughts, is what I meant to say? That's six to zero. Okay.
Okay, the next two items would be legislative actions as well. And Councilmember Mono, I believe these are yours, so correct me if I get any of this wrong, through the review process of this zoning consolidation, um, he would like, Councilmember Mono would like the administration to do some more research on interior blocks that were part of this, that have narrow streets and single-family structures, and consider downzoning some of these properties. Some neighbor, some of the neighborhoods in these areas would like that downzone to protect their existing uses.
Correct, yes, and this might surprise people, but I am asking for the, for us to consider, not with this change, but asking, um, planning staff to look at zones in MU5 and above, or areas in MU5 and above that really still have intact single-family uses, um, and looking at changing those to MU2 or MU3. And the reason for that is because that still allows mixed use, it still allows some additional development, but it does also mean that the properties adjacent to them, if they develop off the five feet high, need to include stepbacks that would protect those single-family uses. And I, I think it, I know that at least through a previous rezon that we were, that we have approved, the neighbors on Coatesville came and asked for things like this, and I said, well, the issue was that, you know, we couldn't really protect their properties because they have the same right to go up to the same five stories. But if we were to downzone those properties, then it would give those additional stepbacks. So it's a, it's something that I think makes sense and helps preserve a few of these areas. I have like three or four of them within this, between Main and State Street that, that really do still function as, as smaller-scale developments. I think they're totally appropriate to have some mixed use within them, but I think it's also appropriate to ask directly adjacent developments to give them a little bit of breathing room.
Wow, okay, Councilmember Mono advocating for downzoning.
I know, I told you you'd be surprised.
He's not running for reelection, he can just trash his legacy right now.
Yeah, this is great, this is an historic day. Councilmember Lopez Chavez?
Uh, thank you, Chair. I'd, I'd love to better understand before we straw poll this, I'd love to see which interior zones this is going to affect, because I can think of some in Central City that this could really help benefit, but I want to make sure that I'm digesting that downzone potential correctly, and I'd like to see a geographic map within my district. I don't know if that would benefit any other district, but I'm, I'm sure I can think of some places.
That, I think that's part of why we're, um, in my work with planning, that we're asking, I, I'm asking for this to be a legislative action, to ask them to study it and come back with maps, because they felt like just, there's several different places and they wanted more time to look at it and to be able to say, these are the places that make sense and these are the places that it does not. There just wasn't enough time within this process to get that higher level of analysis done. So I think the legislative action would be asking them to come back with recommendations, and then we can then look at the maps and, and decide which ones are appropriate or not.
Okay, thank you for the clarification. Yeah, I'd be supportive of that.
Councilmember Dugan?
Yeah, just for my, in this case, this area is right now, was online to be MU5 or above?
Correct.
And the idea is that you make it, either keep it at R1 or just down to MU2 or 3, that's one of the ideas.
It's, they're not R1 districts, they're already corridor commercial, I believe, so that gets automatically mapped to MU5. And I think within what we are approving, we would just map it to MU5 now, but then ask them to review, come back and potentially downzone them.
Okay, all right, I appreciate that, that's.
That would give us the opportunity to notice all of the property owners, and they could let us know if they want that or not, and we have the chance to get more information.
Right, and I'm just looking at the example on Coatesville.
Yeah, and I would, I would just clarify, so it's only MU districts that we'd be considering. It wouldn't be a review of RMF or R1 or anything like that, just the MU consolidation properties.
Great, I'm all for that.
I think so, yeah.
Okay.
So I'll propose a straw poll that we pass a legis, that we ask staff to draft up a legislative action, um, asking that we look at properties within the MU zone that, that have, or streets within the MU zones that have primarily single-family dwelling uses on them, and consider rezoning them down to MU2 or 3.
All right, that is six to zero.
Okay, we have four more questions that we really want to make sure we get through so.
Yes.
Before, before we get to that, may I request a five-minute recess before the final four?
Yeah.
Thank you.
Is everyone okay with that? Great.
You're the best, thank you.
Okay, we'll break for five minutes. Okay, we'll break for five minutes. So our work session, we were on item 18B for legislative actions.
Yep. This is, this is one that's pretty straightforward. It would request a review and to update parts of the Central City master plan related to the State Street corridor for consideration of higher density. Councilmember Mono, I believe this is one of yours. It feels like the area is underutilized. It could have higher density in that area. So that's what the request is, to, to do that review.
Correct, yeah. So the, the State Street corridor is one that, similar to what we were just talking about with North Temple, we have a very old master plan that is, that is still in place. So I'm just asking that we look at, not the whole Central City master plan, but just the State Street corridor, and, and modernize that master plan, which would then allow us to consider different zoning in that area.
Does this corridor go all the way down to the border to border? Is that what you're thinking of? Or the Capitol down?
Central City, I think goes from Ninth South to 21st.
Can you repeat that question?
Is it just going on State Street, the whole corridor from the Capitol all the way down to the South?
It'd be about from Ninth South to 21st South.
Okay, Ninth South, okay.
Yeah.
Okay.
Straw poll?
Mr. Chair, I propose a straw poll that we ask planning staff to begin updating the Central City community plan along the State Street corridor.
Okay. Alan, show your feelings on that, everyone. Straw poll. Okay, that is six, zero.
Okay. If it's all right, Daniel, I'm going to turn this one over to you.
All right. So this one's pretty straightforward. So the MU11 extra height options that we talked about last week, it uses a couple terms that we're just hoping to clarify. So one of those is an option to go up, above 125 feet to 150 would require a ground floor commercial use on 100% of the ground floor. We're proposing to revise that to, say, enhanced active use, which is the term that we're using in this MU consolidation. So it includes things beyond just retail and restaurant. It includes like a public use of public meeting spaces, sort of, deal. Additionally, we're proposing to clarify the affordable housing, to say, affordable housing in compliance with the affordable housing incentives, where we actually add parameters on the duration of time that a unit has to be affordable, affordability levels and other requirements, or rather, just leaving it open. So that is the first straw poll.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
So this is, this is really not changing the intent. It's just clarifying so that there's less confusion. Is that correct, Daniel?
Correct.
Okay. Great.
Okay. So, everyone show your feelings on the straw poll as stated by Daniel. Okay?
Yes.
And that is six, zero.
Okay. All right. And then 19B is a little bit more complicated. So after looking at the text, we realized that with that bonus in the Granary and Sugar House area, you can go up to 150, but that you can also go up an additional three stories with the affordable housing incentives. So effectively, with affordable housing, you get 61 more feet. We just wanted to confirm with the council that they're comfortable with that level of additional height with affordable housing in the Granary and Sugar House. And then we are proposing, if you are comfortable with that, revising it a little bit so that you actually have to do, for that first 25 feet, you have to do 100% enhanced active use or mid-block walkway. Just do, add a little bit more for a very tall structure. So it's not just purely affordable. You have to do a couple more things as well.
Okay. Everyone?
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, Councilmember Mono.
I think that's fine. I just wanted to ask about the mid-block walkway. In my memory, in other parts of our code, we're asking for a 15-foot mid-block walkway.
Correct.
Is that correct? Why wouldn't we be asking for a 20-foot here instead of the 15 that we're asking in other places?
So it's to try to be a little proportional. A 15 feet was sort of the, the minimum that we'd want to get. But if you're doing a taller building, we're, we're saying you should give us a little bit more, a little bit more proportional to what they're asking for as far as height. So we're asking for a 20-feet more comfortable mid-block walkway.
Okay. But they also could just do the 100% enhanced active use?
Correct.
Instead of that? I think I'm okay with both of those. So I'll propose a straw poll that we support 19B.
19B.
Correct.
Sorry. I'm just toggling between this and the map. Okay. So it's 65 feet? 61. Okay. Like that makes, ooh. Okay, yes. Okay, that is, Councilmember Mono, were you a yes on that?
Yes.
Okay. So that's six, zero.
Okay, two more. The last one is number 20 on the sheet. This is a request from the property owners to rezone this to MU8 instead of MU6. This is at approximately 1435 South State Street.
This is similar to that one along North Temple. I'll just share my thoughts on it. I, I do think it's appropriate for us to go to MU8 in this area. There are a couple differences between this and the North Temple. It sounds like they both have older master plans that don't necessarily allow for it. But the only difference would be that, that North Temple has a lot of MU8 along it, but State Street doesn't have quite as much MU8. It's a little bit, has, I think, one a little further south. So, but I still think it would be appropriate. I wasn't going to originally ask for this, but then when I saw the North Temple ones on there, I figured it was appropriate to put this on there, because the property owner had reached out to me for it. So, that's my thoughts.
So Councilmember Mono, are you asking for it?
I just want us to consider it. I think it's fair that we consider this the same that we considered North Temple. And I was just sharing that I think there are some differences. I'm still supportive of it. It's not necessarily, it's not something that I am necessarily advocating for, but I think it's appropriate. And so if the rest of the council thinks it's appropriate, I, I felt like it was just fair to put this request on, since we put other requests from property owners.
Because we're, in this area, there's all MU5, except for this one area. M6 is the, MU6 is the Coachman block. And where's the other MU8s in this?
It's a couple blocks south.
Couple blocks south, right?
So yeah, that's the primary difference, I believe, between this. And I guess the other difference would be that we are, the back of this property is adjacent to smaller residential, more closely than the ones on North Temple. Personally, I still think it's appropriate, but I am, given the previous straw poll that we took to update the Central Community Master Plan, I'm okay with doing it now, just because we know that there's someone ready to reinvest in this neighborhood. Also, okay with saying, let's do the other thing first. But if the council's supportive of it, I'd, I'd ask that we just do it now.
My, my concern here is just the idea that you have the other four, three corners here that are MU5, the one north of it, which is, is more of a manufacturing area, is MU5 also, well, it's also, it's a parking lot right now. And that's, that's my concern with those single-family homes that are right there, and that extra, that extra 30-some-odd feet from 5 to 8, right? There's 30, 30 feet difference in house, in the height requirements or height limits.
Can I clarify? Then is it MU6 just past that MU5 block, the one that's in green? Do, like, at the top of the picture?
Yeah, that's a Coachman.
So there, there are along that street front side going to already be some MU6? It's just a question of whether it's that property or not, based on its proximity to the homes behind it.
Well, this one is MU6 now, and it's requesting to go to MU8.
Got it. Okay. Thank you for that clarification.
And the, the Coachman, which is north, is a, is a property just due east of the Coachman on the backside, also MU6?
No.
Because I know there's.
It's not. It's, yeah, it's RMF 45.
RMF 45. So basically, but the same, similar height?
As MU6? It's lower.
It's lower, yeah. And so that, that's a little bit different, because there's, you go to, from MU6 to RMF 45, then across the street, you have the single-family homes. Whereas in this corner lot, you have, you go from MU8 right to a single-family homes. And that's, that's where I'm just, I'm concerned about the additional height there. With everybody else already going to MU5, it's like, okay, everybody else will, whoa, I want to go to MU8. So then you tend to have this dominoes effect of everyone else wanting to go to MU8. And we're just allowing one parcel to go to MU8 along this whole corridor, or along this section of, of State Street.
Yeah, Councilmember Dugan, I think that's very appropriate. I, personally, I do think that going to MU8 is appropriate along State Street. It's one of our biggest roads in the city. But I'm also sensitive to the fact that it is close to single-family, and that we, that it may be a cleaner process for us to go through the whole updating the master plan and then rezoning them.
Yeah.
But I just felt like it wasn't fair for us to review, to consider some people's properties along the ones on the North Temple, and not consider other ones that, that property owners asked for. So that's why I asked for this to be included.
Yeah, and I, and I agree. And I think this is a good discussion, because I think it goes back to your, your previous, you know, legislative intent on the whole, the whole State Street corridor. Yeah, if, if it's a whole State Street corridor, it was MU8, I think that would, I would, I, I'm not against that, but I'd like to have that, that discussion held after, after we, we let the dust settle on this all being MU5. And then we could look at rezoning the whole thing to MU8 at some point. But at this point, I think I have a hard time looking at this one spot on State Street to MU8 at this time. That's my consideration.
I think that's a reasonable response. I, I think that, I, I think that a yes or no on this are both reasonable, I guess, is what I'm saying. But if there's no more discussion, I would, I guess, like to ask for a straw poll to support it, and just see where the votes land with, without.
Chris is having a... Darren, go ahead and repeat your straw poll.
Okay. I, I think Councilmember Dugan's points are very reasonable. I would still like to ask for a straw poll to support it, and just see where the votes land on it.
Okay. So what, I guess you're going to need to restate the straw poll.
So the straw poll is that we change the zoning designation for the properties highlighted near 1435 South State Street to MU8.
Okay. Any other comments or anything on that? Okay, go ahead and show your thoughts.
I'm a yes.
I'm a yes too, Mr. Chair.
Okay. I'm a, I'm a thumbs down on this one, but doesn't matter, because we got four yeses.
Okay. Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Can I make an additional straw poll that is not on the printed material?
I suppose.
You're the best. Okay. What? Yes. I, well, let me propose it, and then if there's dialogue between the vote.
Great.
So I would like to request to rezone two properties from MU8, or, pardon me. Let me start again. I would like to request a rezone of properties to MU8 instead of MU5 for two parcels on 2100 South. The first parcel is called the Midas Block, between 2100 South, 900 East, abutting the Intermountain Healthcare Clinic. The second parcel is called the Snell Grove Site, from 2100 South, between 900 East to 800 East, over to Commonwealth Avenue.
Okay. Anyone have any questions about the straw poll?
Just pulled up the map, Councilmember. Could you say the, the coordinates of the Midas Block again?
So it is the corner of 2100 South and 900 East on the northwest corner. And it's the property that then abuts up to the Intermountain Healthcare Clinic, further down 9th East.
Assume that the reason for that is similar to the last two that we discussed.
Correct.
And just for clarification, that would extend west to Win, to Windsor Street?
That sounds accurate.
Okay. I'm just looking for whether people are ready to vote.
And the area around it is MU5 at the currently, and this would be to MU8?
Yes. So for the Snell Grove property in particular, that parcel was previously brought forward to council, who supported additional height related to that property. At the time, it was to also include some affordable housing components. That property has since transferred hands, but it was part of the community conversation related to being able to have additional affordability in the Sugar House area. Midas is directly across from it, and would have kind of a similar opportunity for improved commercial on the ground floor with also some. for, um, improved commercial on the ground floor with also some additional height up against the clinic.
Right. And, and the, and there's no, on the Midas property, there's no single family homes in that area. It's, it's, and just looking at the map, it's all, uh, commercial. And then on the, uh, Snell Grove, again, the south side Commonwealth, there's single family homes there, but this has been under development, so to speak, for as long as I've been in the council, because I think we voted on that four years ago or something like that.
Correct. And the council has previously also supported, um, an expansion related to the water line and the sewer utility services to be able to facilitate this type of development, um, about a year and a half ago.
Right, right, right. So I'm, I'm, uh, I'm, I'm in favor of that. And, and really I'm in favor of that just because it's unlike the other one, which I understood is going to MU8, this one doesn't have the same thing, impact on the single family home, so.
Can we make him bring the ice cream back?
Um, so it is staying. And if it wasn't staying, we've heard from the Snell Grove family who is happy to receive that ice cream cones for, um, placing it in a community space where others could enjoy it. But the current landowner would like to maintain those and has a plan.
Okay. And I don't want a Jimmy Jones, Jimmy John's ice cream cone. That is a really sad looking ice cream.
We've discussed that as well.
Dangerous.
District four has its oddities, but we appreciate the cone.
All right. Okay. Any, or let's go ahead and show your feelings. Kate?
Yes.
All right. That is, um, yeah. Oh, great. Kate, that's six to zero. Great.
We will incorporate these changes in time for the public hearing on May 6th, and then the council can vote after that.
Thank you. Thanks for being here. All right. Now we need to make up for lost time, people. So keep that in mind. We're at agenda item number two, which is, um, the first of our budget discussions for the 2025, 26 budget year, fiscal year. How exciting. It all starts now. Isn't that great? Come on down, Department of Airports.
So in interest of time, I'll forego an introduction that would just repeat much of what Brian will probably, and Bill will want to outline, and just go to them.
Thank you.
All right. Thank you very much. Great to see everybody. So I'm going to make a few just, uh, broad comments about the current condition of the airport, uh, and the kind of financial future, and then let Brian do the specific presentation. And I think, I was just thinking about this today, actually, we're about a year and a half from concluding the airport redevelopment program, which, um, when it's done, will have been a constant, uh, 12 years, 13 years really worth of construction. Uh, that doesn't mean we're done. I don't think we'll ever really be done, but we'll be done with the airport redevelopment program. And the budget, I think, really reflects that in a number of ways. First, uh, as you'll see, debt service has increased pretty dramatically because we have acquired, uh, a lot of debt. We're not quite done. We'll be back to see you in June, I think it is. Three weeks. Oh, okay. Sooner than that. Uh, and that'll be our last new money issue to conclude the airport redevelopment program. Uh, and all of that debt is reflected in our, uh, budget because as the project becomes available for our tenants, the airlines and others, uh, we begin paying that debt. They begin paying, uh, us to, uh, to pay that debt. We are assuming responsibility for vast new swatches of airport to operate, uh, and the budget reflects that as well. I think one way to, uh, sort of visualize this is that when, in a span of seven years, which is, uh, um, from start to finish, opening, start to finish, um, we will have gone from an airport that had 52 jet bridges to one that has 94. So we're taking responsibility for, uh, vast, uh, new, uh, areas to manage and to operate. Uh, and then finally, uh, and this is kind of crazy in some ways, but, but not really. We're starting to have to replace things that it feels like we just installed, uh, particularly really expensive things like special systems and IT and so forth. I had someone in my office the other day admiring the screen on the wall. It's sort of not quite that big, but it's got all the bells and whistles. He said, I'd really like to have something like that. And I said, well, they're no longer for sale. It's 15 years old. Uh, and so you'll have to kind of look in today's technology, but that really reflects itself throughout the airport through all kinds of systems that, uh, we will now begin to replace. Uh, and then finally, um, we have an old fashioned CIP which reflects kind of basic airport needs, uh, and you'll see that reflected in our current budget. And this is really the first time we've had a significant CIP that wasn't specifically , uh, related to the airport redevelopment program. So, um, for example, we're going to be extending the center runway, uh, by about 2,000 feet or so. We're doing some enabling projects for a future concourse C, which is way down the road, but needs things to happen now, and so on, uh, and so forth. So Brian, uh, can present the budget specifically and obviously, uh, as always, feel free to interrupt along the way or ask questions related or not to the budget.
All right. Thanks, Bill. If we can go to the first slide, we advanced this. So as Bill said, if you guys have questions, let me know. I'm going to go fairly quickly through this budget, uh, but not that I'm trying to not cover anything. Uh, this first slide, it really is just kind of, whenever we approach a budget, what are our, what are our goals and our drivers? The fourth bullet point talks about grants. There's been a lot of talk, uh, with the current administration on kind of grants. We have a slide specific to that, just to kind of update you on the annual amount that the airport receives, which grants we're concerned about, which grants are we not concerned about. And as Bill mentioned on the very last bullet point, we are going to go to the bond market this summer, uh, in July. We will be back to brief you, uh, in, in full in three weeks, uh, and so I'll save, uh, that for, uh, when we come back in three weeks. So if we go to the next slide. So this is a really, really busy slide. It's mountain stream to like just see so many numbers and, you know, but, uh, what it is, is it's really kind of showing you, what did we tell you last year? What was our fiscal year 25 budget? How well are we doing with that budget and the, what we're forecasting? And the forecast is based off of six months of actual results. So, you know, we do have updated results, but we kind of cut it off as of December 31st and, uh, forecast that out. And then what are we requesting this coming year? And so this is really kind of the health of the airport. And, you know, if you go to the very bottom, this is, it, it basically says, what's all of our revenue streams? What's all of our expenditures, including, you know, capital equipment, capital projects? And you can see that we told you, we thought we would, you know, put into the bank about $79 million. Well, because we haven't spent some of that money on construction projects, uh, it's coming in a little bit higher. And you'll see that this coming year, it looks like we're going to have $185 million that we're going to generate, uh, after paying all of our expenditures. Now, we have plans for that money. Um, obviously that's a $5 billion project. Four billion of it's, uh, debt financed. The rest is through airport generated revenue as well as grants. Uh, but we continue to, uh, fund, as Bill mentioned, capital equipment and capital improvement projects. It's around 40 to 50 million dollars, and it's always been cash financed, and we'll get into details of that. But we also, when we go to the rating agencies, we meet with investors. They, they require, or we've set a goal that we will always have at least one year's worth of, uh, operating cash on hand. So if we have $242 million in operating expenditures, we always have to have that in the bank. And so, um, it just kind of gives you an idea of the different revenue streams. There's grants there, there's interest income, but there's also the interest expense, as Bill mentioned. It's about $170 million, uh, that we're going to be paying next year. So if we go to the next slide. Our budget really is developed, uh, by asking the airlines what they think, uh, the, the passenger traffic will be at the International Airport this coming year. And it's a really unique year in that there's a lot of disruptions, there's a lot of uncertainty, especially with travel, you know, with the current administration. Uh, there's been talks of our, our neighbors from Canada not coming and traveling to the United States. I will say, uh, we have a new carrier coming, WestJet. They're a low cost carrier in Canada. Uh, they're going to be servicing about in a month from now from Salt Lake City directly to Edmonton. They're still planning to launch service. They still think the demand's there, and, uh, they're going to try five days a week, uh, direct service. But really when, what we do is we take the, uh, the passenger forecast, and it really drives our revenues and kind of what we think we're going to get in parking, uh, rental cars, things to that nature. And as you're seeing, normally we have really good growth, three, 4% growth. It's really flat this coming year, and I think that's what we're just kind of seeing with, uh, what's going on in the, uh, the economy. So if we go to the next slide. We wanted to put in a slide about grants, and there's all kinds of different grants that the airport receives, and I've tried to name them up top. So the traditional one is the airport improvement program. Historically, we get about 15 to 20 million dollars from the FAA. These are generally used on kind of airfield projects, things, think taxiways, runways, things to that nature. And, you know, ever since 2014, as we've been building the new airport, we've been using those grants to kind of construct the apron and the taxiways and the runways. Um, you know, the, uh, Congress just passed the FAA reauthorization. We're very confident that this grant money will continue to go forward. Um, but we budget projects on an annual basis. We consult with the airlines and we tell them how much we're going to budget as far as grants and how much, you know, the airport's going to cash fund it and then charge the airlines. Um, we still have bipartisan infrastructure law grants. Um, this is a one-time funding. The airport's receiving about $25 million a year. This has a definite life on it. We've received four years' worth of allocations. We have a grant application in today. It's for parallel taxiways to the north of the control tower. We're pretty confident in working with the FAA that this grant will survive and it will get executed, and we will continue down that. Um, another one-time funding source is the airport terminal program, which actually allows us to use federal funds to build a concourse. This was the first time we've ever really been able to do this. We've already expended 54 million and been reimbursed. There is a, an award for $15 million. That has not been awarded to the airport, and every month we do not get that award. We're losing about $3 million worth of eligibility, just based on this, the pace of the construction. We're getting ready to finish up construction. Uh, the last grant is the zero emission vehicle, um, grants. This is the one that we're not very optimistic will survive. Uh, what we've done is we've basically gotten electric vehicles for the airport fleet. We've gotten electric shuttle buses, we've got charging infrastructure, and we continue to put in for those grant applications. And the FAA says, put it in, we don't know if it'll get executed or not. And then we have to make the decision where we, whether we fund those with cash or not. And so you can see over a five-year period, it's about $283 million. Um, a lot of that is one-time money that will be going away. What will kind of continue is that 15 to 20 million dollars.
Oh, thank you. Will the enterprise, are you thinking about using the enterprise fund to fill those gaps where the federal funding has lapsed?
Correct. So if we go to the next slide, we'll move on. Uh, so this is really a snapshot of the revenues, uh, and this is specific to the revenues that we charge the airlines. And there's really two, uh, components that are increasing this year. It's landing fees and it's terminal rents. And as Bill mentioned, as we bring gates online, or as we bring the air apron pavement around those gates online, we put it into a rate base and we charge the airlines for that. And so as we have more square footage, as our costs go up, you know, we allocate that to the airlines. And, uh, you can kind of see that, you know, in fiscal year 25, our landing fees were going from 90 million up to 99 million. Terminal rents 212 million up to 251 million. Uh, we do have revenue sharing. We try to incentivize all airlines, not just Delta, but any airline that brings a passenger, we give them a dollar 40. And so it doesn't matter if you bring 10 million passengers like Delta or you bring 100,000. We try to make it a, a level playing field for all airlines. And so we're, that's where we're starting to see, you know, the sun countries and some of these other airlines start operating service in Salt Lake City. So just, uh, to kind of summarize this, airline revenue is going from about 297 million up to 350 million, but it's really just based on kind of the facilities coming online and having to put the debt service to pay for that as well as the operating expenses. The next slide kind of talks about everything outside of the revenue, airline revenue, and this is what we call concession revenue. Um, parking is by far our number one revenue stream at the airport. Um, it's been very busy, especially over the spring break. We were very concerned we were going to run out of parking. Uh, we had contingencies and overflow parking and, you know, we were reaching out to all the off-airport parking operators, they were full as well. And that's kind of the worst nightmare. You show up to the airport an hour ahead or an hour and a half thinking you've got plenty of time, and then all of a sudden, if there's not parking, and you got to figure someplace to park. So we're not doing any rate increases this year. This is just based on demand. Uh, we continue to close the garage, you know, a couple days a week. The business traveler is definitely back and at the airport. But you can also see that our rental cars are going up significantly. We're currently in a solicitation for a new rental car agreement. Um, you know, it started in 2017. Uh, you know, they took the facilities in 2020, and so they're generally around 10-year agreements. And with the new agreement, there are new revenue streams associated with that, and so we projected that into this budget. I will draw attention to food and beverage. It looks, this is kind of your Cafe Rios Market Street Grills. It looks like it's going up significantly from 17 million to 23 million. But if you read the staff report that Nick, uh, prepared, we have the American Express Lounge opening up on concourse B this October. These are very lucrative deals for credit cards, and they pay a lot of money to airports to operate there. And so we're projecting about five and a half million dollars from revenue from American Express to allow, if you're not, if you have the right credit card, the American Express, uh, it doesn't matter if you're a Delta flyer or you're a United Flyer, American Express or an American, you can go into this club. And so we put it into food and beverage, um, but next year, we're going to actually break out third-party lounges, just so we really can compare from year to year, how is the traditional food and retail doing compared to the others? But you can see we're going from 150 million to about 167 million. So if we go to the next slide. Uh, this gets into the operating expenses, and there, I will say, there was a lot of scrutiny on operating expenses this year. Uh, we have a really good relationship with Southwest. They send a letter to all airports, and you got one of three letters. Either your costs are way too high and we need to talk, your costs are moderately too high, we want you to keep an eye on it, or you guys are doing fantastic. And pretty much any of the large hub airports got the, kind of the, your costs are way too high. Letter number one. But I remember we got this letter and immediately the senior vice president of corporate real estate called Bill and myself, he's like, hey, I sent this letter, we actually are not concerned in Salt Lake City, but we just want to draw attention to airports across the country, their costs are all going up. Because it's not just Salt Lake City building a new airport, everybody's building a part of a new airport. And so, you know, we met with Southwest, we met with Delta, and we went over these costs and we explained all the reasons why these costs are going up. And so it is a 23 and a half million dollar increase. Um, and we've broken it out, you know, whether it's salaries and benefits, whether it's maintenance contracts, you know, whether it's charges that for services we receive from Salt Lake City, uh, including police, fire, IT, HR, um, all of those things. And so if we go to the next slide, I kind of highlighted what is causing the increase of 23 and a half million. So, um, we understand that the general fund has challenges in their budget. Um, we were very cautious to not throw a lot of FTEs into our budget. Um, we are asking for 10 new airport employees. Five of those are IT related. Um, a couple are in our maintenance, one is in operations and a couple in planning. Um, originally we started with 20 and we cut it kind of in half. You know, police, it's really kind of based on their cost of living, uh, increases that have been negotiated. It's set to go up by $2 million. We have had a plan where we've been bringing on six new officers every year. We deferred those six new officers this year. Um, you know, charges from the IMS department is about a million dollars to the airport. And then we always work with Mary Beth and Greg Clary and their team, and we're kind of developing our budget in December and January. And we assumed a 4% cost of living adjustment, and at the time we were told a 10.8%, uh, cost for insurance. And so it's about four and a half million. We've since learned that insurance isn't quite as high, but as soon as we set the budget, we really say, this is what a landing fee is for the airlines. This is what it's going to cost to rent a square foot, but we have a true-up with the airlines. And so every year, we said, here, here was our budget, here's what we actually spent. And for example, this year, we're projecting to be about $9 million under budget, and so we give them rent waivers. And for this year, we're doing 50% off landing fees in June, just to try to say, this is how much we should have charged you. So if we overcharge them because of insurance in our budget, it always gets trued up and we always try to get it. we always try to get it in the year that we can. So there's some other things, you know, we are investing in AI at the airport. The airlines are really into it. So we're going to have some ramp AI technology for the airlines that help them with safety, with speed of service, things to that nature. And then there are a lot of things, as Bill mentioned, especially IT-related that we're replacing. And so that's going into the budget. So just a couple more slides. If we go to the next slide. This just kind of gives you an idea. We have eight divisions at the airport. There's ten new FTEs, six-hundred-and-seventy employees total, four-point-three part-time. Next slide is just, we're going to go over the capital equipment real quick.
Let me jump in with a question from Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Thank you. Sorry to interrupt. I didn't notice in the operating expenses, if there were any hive or UTA passes for workers. Is that something that the Enterprise Fund covers at all?
I'm sorry, I didn't hear the question. Could you repeat?
Yes. Tell me if you can hear me.
Yeah.
Okay. Sorry, I don't want to be too loud. If, I didn't see in the operating expenses, if we cover any worker hive passes for UTA access?
So UTA passes.
Yeah.
So we do cover it for airport employees, just like the rest of the city. You know, we have lots of contractors, whether it's parking, whether it's janitorial, TSA, Customs Border Patrol. You know, we have a really good relationship with UTA and we work with them and we're trying to expand service with busing and, you know, extended hours, things to that nature. But we, we can only pay for our airport employees to have the UTA.
But it is covered for our employees.
Okay. Is that in line item that I can find later?
So it's a charge, it's in their governmental charges. So it's based on actual usage. We just get a bill from, you know, finance downtown that says, here's how many people use the rideshare service, whether it's front runner, whether it's tracks, whether it's bus.
Got it. Thank you. I'd love to better understand what percentage of our workers are using that. I know that's come up kind of in conversations of facilitating workers to use that versus vehicular access.
Okay, yeah, we can definitely try to get you some stats on that. We'll follow up with that. Any other questions? Okay. So real quick, we have about twelve million dollars' worth of capital equipment. These are all cash financed, as you saw in the earlier slide. About six million of it is replacement of old equipment and about six million is new equipment. You'll see the number one item is two electric shuttle buses. Again, we're pursuing grants. If we don't get that grant, we promised the mayor, we would look at using our own cash reserves to potentially buy those. We've got four on order that should be arriving here this summer. And I think we have two others and they're just long lead items. So we'll put a purchase order in. Takes about eighteen months to get one of these electric shuttle buses.
And I think the important thing to note here is this will require, obviously, that we install the infrastructure, which is very important. Airport campuses are really actually great places to electrify and so we're excited about this. The early word is that the maintenance costs go down significantly. We have a budding fleet of Ford Lightnings that we're using on the airfield. And really, tires is about the only thing we've had an issue with because they drive them at high rates of speed on pavement that is very difficult on tires, but pretty exciting. So we're thrilled because we have a large shuttle operation, obviously, at the airport and at some point in the future, as we cycle through all those, it'll be all electric.
Yeah, the next biggest item you'll see is some equipment for a lighting bulb. We actually have three lighting bulbs. The original request was to basically buy updated equipment for all of them, but in working with our maintenance and our electrical department, they said, hey, if we can just do one of them, we can take the spare parts from that one and kind of keep the other two going for another year or two and kind of defer those costs. And then you'll see snow blowers. You know, the airport does a really good job when it comes to winter operations. We store our equipment all inside, but they are very expensive pieces of equipment. So it's about a million dollars for that. And then you'll see some servers and loaders on that. So if we go to the next slide, it really kind of talks about, you know, everything outside of what we're building in the new airport, the concourse and the terminal. This year, because we've approved a lot of projects in past years that are going to be cash financed in future years, we're only approving thirty million dollars. And of that, only seventeen million dollars is coming out of airport cash. Eight million is going to be coming from a fee that we charge rental cars or the rental car companies charge their customers and then remit it to the airport, the customer facility charges. And about five, four-and-a-half million is going to be coming through grants. And that's really just to say that the grants that we've gotten in past years and future years are kind of already earmarked for different taxiways and different projects that, you know, are hundreds of millions of dollars and more than the fifteen million dollars we would get. And you can kind of see how it's broken out. You know, we do have two other airports and we're investing about nine million dollars in those airports, which is always, you know, whether it's Twilla or whether it's our West Jordan Airport is really important for us. And so we just have two more slides. One is a gate phasing slide that kind of shows we're really towards the end, you know, when we look at all the tariffs going on. I am so grateful we started this project in 2014. We're ending the project right as all of this disruption. Yeah, we had COVID-19 and we had some challenges during then, but to be able to open, you know, ten gates this October, which will completely finish Phase Three and get us the first five gates of Phase Four, but then by October of 2026, we're done. We're going to bring the last eleven gates. We'll have fully built out concourse A, concourse B, and we'll have some flexibility because there is a permanent hard stand at the end of B that, you know, will get us to, you know, ten, fifteen years until concourse C can be constructed. And then I just want to end with kind of a recent picture and it really kind of shows you what the airport looks like today. And this is north facing south, but you can kind of see those last gates there in the bottom left-hand corner. And so those are the gates that we're constructing today. You can see there's a lot of pavement that needs to happen in the next year and a half. And so we're confident. We work very closely with our program management team and so by October 2026, we're going to be done. So with that, happy to answer any questions you guys may have.
Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Yeah, no questions, but I'm super impressed by the revenue increases and I think that just goes to show how we are this dominant airport in the West and in the United States. So kudos to you, Bill, and your team and the leadership. I'm really, really impressed with how innovative our systems have been and of course, the openings of our different concourses and the future expansion of our airport. So thank you to you and your team. Yeah.
Councilmember Young.
I'll also echo that kudos. I think one of the pieces for me that's interesting is I remember seeing this past spring, the announcement that we had more travelers travel through TSA than we had any time previously and that that was showing an uptick. I think that as we, we see those new gates open and that we reach like a capacity limit, it'll be a good conversation to say what is maintenance versus like the continued growth trajectory. But as somebody who was out there last weekend, getting directed to my parking spot because it was like that tight in terms of being able to fit everyone, I understand the needs that are being articulated and want to make sure we continue to provide the services that we've been known for for the past several years. So thank you.
Councilmember Petro.
I'm just really proud that this is a D1 Enterprise and I get to hang out with you. I think you guys are spectacular. Two questions. First, if the movement to partially privatize TSA as it was before nine-eleven continues, will that impact our revenue or does that go to the airlines and are, would we be prepared for that, I'm assuming?
Yeah, so we'll see where that goes. I was around for nine-eleven, so I remember when all of that transpired.
I think a lot of us are.
And I think there are only three airports in the country that ended up going that way. San Francisco was one. They probably wouldn't say this, but they've all regretted it. It didn't go particularly well. It would not have a direct financial impact on the airport because cost of the TSA and of that service is paid for by the federal government. It's actually paid for originally by a fee on airline tickets. So one question is, what happens to that revenue? Is it just going to go to pay off the national debt or are they going to impose this on the airlines? Our own senior senator has proposed doing away with TSA and turning screening back over to the airlines, which maybe he forgot, but they used to do, not very effectively. And so I, I will be surprised if there end up being significant changes there because there just isn't any indication of poking or prodding. Same with the FAA. They, they made some early misstarts. They offered early retirement. A lot of air traffic controllers took them up on that and that's one of the reasons why it feels so constrained at the moment. And they're trying to, they are actually actively hiring air traffic controllers right now. So it won't have a direct financial effect on us. It would have a significant impact on the airport operations though, and so we're obviously keeping an eye on that very closely.
And so then the second question is, our own governor today asked all the state agencies to prepare for the possibility of a recession. I assume the impact on an airport would be a reduced traffic. So is our building program, are those revenues dependent on traffic or is that all bond-funded and we're already okay with that? And then the reduced traffic, would we, is that something we'd just be able to modulate service to accommodate? Are there any other things I'm missing?
Yeah, I think this is a really good question because we haven't really had to deal, we obviously had to deal with significant disruption during COVID, but there was also substantial federal support during that period of time. And the way the airport agreement works with the airlines, the airline use agreement, Delta signed an agreement that extends really into the 2050s. And there is a provision in our agreement, like most airports, but not all, that says in effect, if the airport can't pay for the operation and debt service of the airport, you will to the airlines. Now, don't get too comfortable with that because if we're doing bad, they're probably doing bad also. So that's kind of how it goes. But what really happens when air travel goes down, the appearance of our cost as an airport goes up for airlines because they pay more per passenger. And what it means also is we're under a lot of pressure to cut costs and that starts probably with the CIP. We can't do anything about our debt service. It is what it is. We're legally obligated to pay that. You know, during the '08 financial crisis, I was in Portland. We laid people off. After nine-eleven, there were substantial reductions and that's just kind of how it is because we're not backed by the full faith and credit of city and Utah taxpayers and the General Fund is not on the hook for the airport. We keep a very close eye on what the airlines are telling us in terms of volumes. I listen to the earnings calls from all the CEOs every quarter. Ed Bastian, who has a reputation for really being the most candid and I think honest of the airline executives making those calls, basically said they're operating in a constrained mode and what that really means is he can see their advanced bookings and the leisure traveler is really pulled back, just kind of, you know, looking at everything out there. Business travel is still very strong, international very strong, but that's all subject to change. This is a little weird because it feels self-inflicted and so it's not like it's something you could see in some economic statistic and go, okay, I can see that coming like the financial crisis. But so we're paying attention. I don't expect it to have much of an impact on this budget. It could on the next one.
Thank you.
Hello, Chavez.
Thank you. I have one more question, Bill. I just wanted to understand how the greeting space is being utilized?
The which?
The greeting space at the entrance of the airport. I've seen it often empty and I, I know that's just my perception, but I'd love to understand how we can better utilize the space and inform families and visitors how they can use that and not block the exit.
This was just one of the greatest ideas ever and when I first got here and was introduced to this concept, I didn't really appreciate the enormity of this activity here in Salt Lake. So I thought, wow, what a great idea because in the old airport, particularly in Terminal One, you could get backed up to the top of the escalator trying to get out of the airport. I mean, it was dangerous. And so, yeah, now we have the greeting room. And I think the, the battle that we're in and we're still in it is one of basic human nature. Mom and dad in the neighborhood haven't seen somebody for eighteen months or two years and you're not going to tell them what to do. And we have, if you could stand on Level Three in the ticket lobby and look down, you can actually just sit there and watch for a while as all of this works out. And our staff, I think, has done a pretty good job and we've worked very closely with the church and the MTC on all of this. They're extremely grateful for the efforts, but also very good to work with. People will now pretty well stay behind the stanchions for the most part. We have changed the exit lane technology so that now the doors, there's three sets, they open and close like that because we had people actually trying to rush through the sliders when they were there. And there are many security benefits to these exit lane doors as well, but the most important is you can't actually see through them. So you don't know that somebody's coming you want to go see. And so there's less of that urgency for people wanting to push through. But as for the greeting room, it's, so far, it's been a great place for the young kids to go sleep when they're waiting, but we've struggled getting everybody to move in there. We are testing an idea out about putting basically a missionary door into the greeting room so that they would actually exit into the greeting room. There are all kinds of issues with that, but we're going to keep poking away at it and see how we do. But during the season, it's crazy. I mean, it's, it's the most amazing thing to see, but it is basic human nature and so far, we're holding our own, but we'll see how that lasts.
Yeah, I'd love to hear an update on that kind of missionary door. I think getting folks to enter or exit through that and utilize that space is helpful. I've also seen online of famous singers coming in and being greeted by mariachis and different residents that are amazing fanatics of it and holding up that space. So I think, just thinking of egress points for people to facilitate exit. I know it's always stressful when you leave a flight and you want to exit and you're bombarded by families and flowers and balloons and musicians. So just trying to understand how we can help design that to facilitate that exit.
We did put a special concession in there, thinking, well, you know, while they're here, maybe they'll spend something, but no. Now we know.
Okay, any questions from councilmembers online? Okay.
I'll just second that. I think that the door directly into the room is the only way to solve the problem. I've thought through this a lot, actually. So there may be another solution, but I, if you're not letting people walk directly into the room, they're not going to use that room.
Okay. Thank you so much. We appreciate it.
Appreciate it.
All right. Later. Okay, our next item is.
Library.
Yes. The library fund. Come on down. All right, thanks for being here. We've got Austin Kimmel from the City Council Office, Noah Basket, Library Director, and Tyler Barr, the Library Chief Financial Officer. Thanks for being here.
Thanks, councilmembers. I just have a brief introduction and then I'll turn it over to the library staff. Salt Lake City Public Library is here to present its proposed fiscal year '26 annual budget. The council's role in the library budget process is unique to other city departments. The library board sets the policy for library operations, while the council is tasked with reviewing and approving the overall budget and setting the library's tax rate. The total proposed budget for FY '26 is forty-three million, two-hundred-and-thirteen-thousand, one-hundred-and-fifty-four dollars, representing about a six-point-nine million dollar or nineteen percent increase from FY '25. The increase is primarily driven by a higher amount anticipated for required pass-through of property taxes to the Inland Port Authority Convention Center Hotel and the Community Reinvestment Agency, or CRA. It's also driven by an increase in capital projects and capital projects are in fact one of the library's main budget priorities this year with a focus on the upkeep of the main library crescent. the main library crescent wall and a facade restoration project at the marmalade branch. There are a list of other capital projects listed on Pages Four and Five of the staff report. And this year's budget does not propose an additional tax increase. The estimated total tax revenue is just shy of $39 million, accounting for about 90% of the library's total budget. And the last point is, the library is not proposing any additional FTEs this year. And they are proposing about a 4% increase for all employees in response to a recently completed compensation study. And with that, I will now turn it over to Noah and Tyler.
Thanks, Austin. Happy Tuesday, council members. We're excited to be here with you all and to present for your consideration review fiscal year 2025, '26, Salt Lake City Public Library proposed budget. As Austin mentioned, the city council, city library board did vote and approve our proposed budget in its March board meeting. And yeah, we're grateful for the opportunity to discuss the proposed budget before you answer your questions. And of course, just grateful to be in partnership with you all, city council members, with the city as a whole, and nurturing a more vibrant city through the library. So I'll turn it over to Tyler to talk a little bit about, before we dive into this year's budget, some of the long-term financial strategy that informed last year's budget when we presented to you all with a proposed tax increase and kind of where we are today based on what we proposed and projected last year. Next slide.
Thanks, Noah. This slide shows you a projection of the library's unrestricted general fund balance each year through fiscal year '29, the beginning balance of each year. The top row is the projection that you probably don't remember from last year, but we shared at that time, and based on the tax increase that was granted last year. Fast forward a year later here, we've now included the actuals for fiscal '24, the approved budget for fiscal '25, as well as all of the impacts of the budget that we're presenting today. Long story short, you see there at the end of the slide that we are on target, that these changes, the budget that we have proposed, does not pose a significant shift from where we intended to be in a number of years. Big consideration with that, you may recall, is the library's anticipation to propose a bond, a general obligation bond, here in fiscal year '27, in the fall of '26. And so we've been working closely with the city's finance team on preparations for that. And we look forward to engaging with the community and with you as members of the city council here later this year and in the fall to identify priorities and receive your input on how that will roll out. Next slide, please.
Okay, before we dive into some of the specifics of the forthcoming budget year, we wanted to, we thought it was incumbent upon us, given that we did request that 50% tax increase last year, to really demonstrate to you all, city council members, some of the early return on investment to Salt Lake City residents based on that increase. So a couple bullet points here that demonstrate that return. This is the second year in a row that the active patron count of Salt Lake City residents, or excuse me, active patron count of the library is actually growing faster than the city's population itself. So we continue to see Salt Lake City residents in droves, taking advantage of library services. We're also excited to be opening our Ballpark Library Lab location here in just a few weeks. If you can look at the heat map to the right of this slide, this shows by city district, the percentage of residents within the district that are active library patrons. And so you can see, and you can see those black dots where we have our libraries located. And the second highest level of active patrons is actually in the district where there is no dot currently. And I think for us, that really illustrates and shows the interest, eagerness, and desire for a library presence in the ballpark neighborhood. And so we're really excited about being able to express that presence here very soon. We've also been able, over the last year, to open two coffee shops within the library system that had been vacant since COVID, over at our marmalade branch with The Lucky Ones, and at the main library with Hugo Coffee Roasters. So increasingly more and more Salt Lakers taking advantage of their vibrant library system. We also, last year, included a $1 million increase in our collections budget that we knew needed some additional investment. And you can see very clearly here what some of the fruit of that investment has looked like in terms of reduced hold times, particularly for digital items, by 17%. And we're continuing to invest in some ways and some new online subscription models to reduce those hold times even more. We also were able to optimize staffing last year with some of the new FTE requested, backfilling some positions that were added when new branches came online a number of years ago, as well as with those, with new positions, able to maintain our current operating hours and levels of programming. And then we were also able to make some really significant safety and security investments, both in infrastructure and on the safety and social services team with a couple new staff members. So again, some real tangible fruit based on that investment that you all supported last year with a 15% tax increase. Next slide.
So as you look at some of the details of this proposed budget, we'll start with revenue. We are projecting a 2% increase in property tax revenue from new growth, which includes the expiration of the depot district increment. As Austin indicated, we are not seeking a property tax increase. Next slide, please.
This is, the priorities for the forthcoming fiscal year are outlined in a letter that's included in our budget book that I believe you all have been given a link to. The priorities, as Tyler just mentioned, is to, our plan is to not request a property tax increase this year in light of the long-term financial modeling. Really, the highest priority was around attending to competitive staff compensation. As you may recall, part of last, this current year's fiscal year budget, we did include implementing a third-party compensation study. We're just in the process of concluding that study and gathering the recommendations that came out of it. And our huge priority this year is to be able to respond to some of the recommendations coming out of that study to ensure that our staff are being paid equitably and competitively. We do also have some prioritized capital projects as well. Listed here are two of the big ones. The two big price tags are the marmalade exterior. Some of the fiber boards are failing on the exterior, and it's a little bit of a safety hazard that we want to address sooner than later. And then the crescent wall that we're planning on anticipating tackling over a couple of fiscal years, but want to get going on that right away. And then also looking to the future, attending to some of the expenses related to the 2026 bond preparation that Tyler mentioned in the fall of 2026 and accompanying capital campaign. And lastly, we are planning on a strategic planning consultation with the forthcoming fiscal year as well. Next slide.
So diving into some of the expenses here, a little more detail. Again, we're prioritizing current staff compensation over new positions. As Austin indicated, we are not seeking an increase to headcount this year. The increase of $2.8 million under personnel includes implementation of the compensation study that Noah mentioned, which found that, generally speaking, our pay ranges are aligned with the market. However, there is a need to increase movement through ranges based on tenure of staff. Also, the 4% COLA and longevity increase, and an estimated 10% increase in the cost of medical benefits for staff that the library pays for. Next slide, please. Turning to capital projects that Noah mentioned, marmalade and the crescent wall are important priorities. There are also a number of other projects throughout the system that are receiving the attention. So we're not neglecting any other spaces in that. We are proposing to use fund balance to lock in current pricing a little higher than we had forecasted previously, so that the library can take advantage of costs as they are now, as opposed to waiting for those to increase a year or two down the road. The proposed budget also includes $220,000 for IT capital projects. That's above and beyond the operational IT expenses. $100,000 specifically to implement an HRIS and ERP system that we're making good progress on. And then, consistent with the direction that we received from the council last year, identifying opportunities to make use of unplanned revenue should that come in. We've identified that as contingency funding. So that's about $870,000, excuse me, $870,000 in facilities and $661,000 in IT projects. Those would not, will not move forward unless and until we identify and confirm the additional funding there at settlement approximately one year from now. Next slide, please.
And this just gives you a little bit more detail on, as we look to the future, both capital campaign and bond preparation this next year, as well as strategic planning consultation. We have hired a development officer, our chief development officer already. We have created the library foundation and are just finalizing the board formation of that group. So really are in a good place to launch a capital camp later this year. We have considered and included a number of expenses related to bond counsel and advisors, as well as the expenses related to working with an architecture firm around really intentional community engagement this coming fall. As we contemplate some of the development plans, we have three large library builds as part of the bond campaign, as well as another of other potential projects, really attending to and incorporating community feedback in developing concepts for those buildings. And we're really excited for the opportunity to work with each of you and get your all's feedback as council members as we move forward in that process later this fall. With the strategic planning consultation, it's been about eight years since the library has engaged in this process. We've been through a pandemic since then. We've been through a number of transitions, an executive director transition amongst others in that time. And it's just, it's really the right time for us to look around the city, attend to what the city is calling forth in the library, and an opportunity for all of library staff to really speak into what our strategic future looks like and to get all oars rowing in the same direction. So we will be issuing an RFP here shortly and engaging in a strategic planning process, probably beginning in the fall of 2025. Next slide. And I won't go into the details here, other than to show you the level of diligence that has gone into the bond and attendant capital campaigns. This Gantt chart shows you all of the details for the next two year, for 2025 and 2026, that's going into that plan. And you can see highlighted this fall, a real, real significant intention of connecting with community members around what the future concepts of library builds will look like. And next slide. And this just shows you, again, kind of our process here related to the library's budget formation and approval process. As I mentioned, we have had the board vote on and approve the budget before you this last month and forthcoming in May. We've been doing a lot of engagement with the mayor's office, with you all, city council, and other city partners. We're currently also talking with all of our staff departments of the current budget. And yeah, and last up is your consideration for approval of the budget before you. And I think that's all we have. Thank you all.
Yeah, thank you, Noah, and thank you to your team. I'm really excited by this. I'd love to better understand, too, in terms of coordinating with staff, we obviously approved the unionization efforts with the different staffers that have joined the union. I'd love to understand how, with different legislation this year, how that's been affected and how that's being resembled in your budget.
So there's no, yeah, thank you, Councilmember Lopez Chavez. There's no inclusion, there's no effect on the budget before you, aside from continued budgeting for professional services related to labor legal counsel. In terms of where we are in the current process, you know, we had the, our Board of Directors, as you know, did approve the labor resolution. And you all, city council members, then approved that resolution that would guide the development or the possible way in which a labor union could be formed by council. You all approved that in January. So we've been in close conversation with Ask Me lawyers ever since then, essentially around moving forward in the process laid out by the resolution. So we kind of, we continue to be at the table with them and talking through that process. We, of course, are mindful of the new state law that limits what can be done after certain dates. But until any of those dates happen, we continue to move forward in the process of the framework outlined in the resolution, which shows how a union vote can take place. Does that answer your question?
Yeah, thank you. I wanted to really understand if that process was interrupted at all. I just have two more questions, if that's okay, Chair. I wanted to understand if you and your team have been coordinating at all or in discussions with the administration regarding the civic campus?
We are, yes. It's been, I think it's been a really great collaborative process. I've been invited to sit on that RFP committee as a library presence and voice on who the firm has selected for that kind of envisioning process.
That's great. I'm really happy. And then my final question was just, I'm really excited by these capital improvement projects. I think the crescent wall and the marmalade branch facade projects are really paramount. And obviously, we'll be celebrating the renovation and the opening of the main library roof. So very, very excited, and thank you for your work. I just wanted to ask about the plaza and some of the space in between that's kind of unleveled, if that's within the parameters of where the library scope would like to also improve?
We certainly would love to improve it. It's unfortunately not our scope. So that is, that is the city's responsibility. And so all of those kind of capital improvements that are needed across Library Square fall outside of the library's responsibility around capital maintenance and improvement. So we're excited for the possibilities in the future, but aren't able to provide for those in our budget.
Thank you for helping me understand that. I know some of the feedback I've heard from constituents that have used it or the families that are trying to access it, is that it's not very walkable or stroller friendly or ADA friendly? So I'd love for us to think about whether if it's appropriate for the library to do a study, or if that needs to be led by the city, but just understanding those consumer behaviors and how that might be effective.
Yeah. Councilmember Lopez Chavez, as I understand it, part of, we did a walkthrough with Nancy Montieth around just all of the challenges related to Library Square and realizing just the number of capital improvements that are needed. And I, as I understand it, this initial firm is really about, one, helping to provide some overall vision to what Library Square and the whole civic plaza and green loop can be, and to help also understand kind of what some of the technical limitations are, as well as opportunities in addressing all of those capital improvements. So we're a really eager and excited partner, like you describe, around just bringing a lot of vibrancy to the square.
Thank you. And I'm super excited once again for that red ribbon cutting. I hope everyone joins. It's super exciting.
Thank you.
Any other questions? Councilmember Mono?
Thanks. Just appreciate the presentation. And I just wanted to say, I will confirm what you said about District Five and the ballpark neighborhood being very ready for a branch library. And I'm hopeful that the temporary location that opens up is very successful and looking forward to hopefully including a more permanent and substantial building within the ballpark redevelopment. So just wanted to say that that's even as recent as last night in communicate, in conversations with my with my constituents, I think people are very excited for that possibility. So thank you for keeping that on the forefront.
Wonderful.
Okay, oh, Councilmember Dugan.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I appreciate the briefing and everything, and I also am just looking at your major projects for the future. You know, of course, Anderson Foothill Library has always been kind of like in the discussion phase of how we, where we're going and what's the next step there. And I can see that it's part of this, an assessment, site assessment is part of your list of things to do for this coming up year. Could you speak a little bit more about that?
Chair, Councilmember Dugan, we do this on a annual basis, every other year, every two years, just because of the settling of the site that we know continues to happen. So just for safety, ensuring that the building is still habitable, that there have been no kind of major tectonic shifts that would prevent us from continuing to offer library services in that building until we're at a place to be able to do, you know, major renovation or remodel. So that, that's why we keep that in there.
Okay. Thank you so much for being here.
Thank you all.
Appreciate the presentation. So councilmembers, we have only 10 minutes for our breaks to get us back on time. So go ahead and take that 10 minutes now and be back at 4:20, please.
Thank you. Thanks, Austin. Thank you.
And for this, we've got Austin Kimmel from the council policy staff, Laura Briefer, the department director, and Lisa Tarafelli, the finance manager for Public Utilities. Thank you. Thank you, I've been practicing.
Thanks, councilmembers. The Department of Public Utilities is here to present its proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-26. The total proposed budget for the department is $410,518,700. This represents a 26.71%, or nearly a $150 million decrease from the department's amended FY25 budget. The decrease is primarily driven by a reduction in the department's capital projects budget and in the department's bond and loan proceeds compared to the previous fiscal year. Public Utilities operates four utilities, water, sewer, stormwater, and street lighting. Each utility operates as a separate enterprise fund with separate revenue, capital programs, and staffing. As the council is aware, Public Utilities recently completed a comprehensive utility rate study for its water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. The study resulted in several recommended utility rate and design changes to more accurately reflect the cost of service delivery across different customer classes. It also aimed at keeping utility rates affordable and fair while ensuring sufficient revenue for operations. The FY26 budget incorporates the recommended rate and design changes, which will result in increased utility bills for some customers and decreased bills for others, depending on the customer class, utility usage, and meter size. Page three of the staff report provides an example of the utility rate changes for a select residential customer with low utility usage. Additional scenarios can be found on pages 63 through 75 of the department's proposed budget book. Another key recommendation of the study, which is incorporated into the proposed budget, is the elimination of the stabilization fee to water and sewer accounts, which was part of the FY25 budget as a temporary measure. And aside from the water-related utility rate changes, the street lighting utility is proposed to increase its rates by 15% to keep up with increased costs and continue the implementation of the street lighting master plan. The department is conducting a new street lighting rate study to inform future budgets. That concludes my introduction, and with that, I will now turn it over to Public Utilities.
Thank you, Austin. I'm Laura Briefer. I'm the director for Salt Lake City Public Utilities, and really want to thank you for the opportunity to present our fiscal year 25-26 budget. Before I do, I want to introduce Lisa Tarafelli, our finance administrator and fearless leader in our all things finance. And then we have our two deputy directors, Jesse Stewart and Jason Brown here. They don't like to sit that close to each other, apparently. And then I also am honored to have the chair of our Public Utilities Advisory Committee here with us today. That's Catherine Flore, and one of our other members who's been with us for quite some time and I think has attended every budget presentation. This is my 10th budget presentation. I think he's been here for every single one of them, and that's Roger Player. So thank you for being here. So as Austin mentioned, this year's budget is a result of a comprehensive effort that included both our standard annual budget process of crunching numbers, looking at our capital needs and our operational needs, but it also includes a comprehensive rate study. We update our rate study every few years, so this is a special year for us to have a new rate study. The rate study was needed to ensure adequate revenue to support all of our operational and capital needs, such as the large treatment plant projects and other capital programs, regulatory programs, while also integrating ongoing priorities, such as water conservation incentives and our rate structure and affordability. So we're thrilled to, we were thrilled to report on our rate study to the council just a few months ago, January 7th. So we won't go into a lot of detail today, but of course, if there are questions on the rate study during our budget presentation, we're happy to answer them today or at a future date. And we are equally thrilled to present our fiscal year 2026 budget. Before I present our slides, I wanted to draw your attention to our fiscal year 2026 budget book. We produce a budget book every year so that we have a lot of detailed information. We'll be presenting a high-level departmental overview today, but the budget book contains a lot of support for the numbers and the priorities that you see in this presentation. Both today's presentation to you, as well as the budget book, are available on our website for the public to access. Detail in our budget book includes the capital and operations for each one of the four enterprise utilities for this upcoming budget year, as well as projections out to the year fiscal year 2030. Appendix A, which starts on page 59 of the budget books, but budget book includes rate change comparisons between last year and this year for each of the utilities, for example, accounts. There's no standard or average water use or sewer use customer out there. There's a lot of variability, but we've put together a whole lot of scenarios for you to look at. And again, that's in Appendix A of the budget book. Appendix B, which starts on page 73 of our budget book, includes some additional supplemental information, such as how our rates compare to other communities in the state and other communities in the western region of the
Agenda item number five, which is the proposed budget for the Department of Public Utilities. And for this, we've got Austin Kimmel from the Council Policy Staff, Laura Briefer, the Department Director, and Lisa Tarafelli, the Finance Manager for Public Utilities.
Thank you. Thank you. I've been practicing.
Thanks, councilmembers. The Department of Public Utilities is here to present its proposed budget for fiscal year 2025-26. The total proposed budget for the department is $410,518,700. This represents a 26.71%, or nearly a $150 million decrease from the department's amended FY25 budget. The decrease is primarily driven by a reduction in the department's capital projects budget and in the department's bond and loan proceeds compared to the previous fiscal year. Public Utilities operates four utilities: water, sewer, stormwater, and street lighting. Each utility operates as a separate enterprise fund with separate revenue, capital programs, and staffing. As the council is aware, Public Utilities recently completed a comprehensive utility rate study for its water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. The study resulted in several recommended utility rate and design changes to more accurately reflect the cost of service delivery across different customer classes. It also aimed at keeping utility rates affordable and fair while ensuring sufficient revenue for operations. The FY26 budget incorporates the recommended rate and design changes, which will result in increased utility bills for some customers and decreased bills for others depending on the customer class, utility usage, and meter size. Page three of the staff report provides an example of the utility rate changes for a select residential customer with low utility usage. Additional scenarios can be found on pages 63 through 75 of the department's proposed budget book. Another key recommendation of the study, which is incorporated into the proposed budget, is the elimination of the stabilization fee to water and sewer accounts, which was part of the FY25 budget as a temporary measure. And aside from the water-related utility rate changes, the street lighting utility is proposed to increase its rates by 15% to keep up with increased costs and continue the implementation of the Street Lighting Master Plan. The department is conducting a new street lighting rate study to inform future budgets. That concludes my introduction, and with that, I will now turn it over to Public Utilities.
Thank you, Austin. I'm Laura Briefer. I'm the Director for Salt Lake City Public Utilities, and really want to thank you for the opportunity to present our fiscal year 25-26 budget. Before I do, I want to introduce Lisa Tarafelli, our Finance Administrator and fearless leader in our all things finance. And then we have our two Deputy Directors, Jesse Stewart and Jason Brown here. They don't like to sit that close to each other, apparently. And then I also am honored to have the Chair of our Public Utilities Advisory Committee here with us today. That's Catherine Flore. And one of our other members who's been with us for quite some time and I think has attended every budget presentation. This is my 10th budget presentation. I think he's been here for every single one of them, and that's Roger Player. So thank you for being here. So as Austin mentioned, this year's budget is a result of a comprehensive effort that included both our standard annual budget process of crunching numbers, looking at our capital needs and our operational needs. But it also includes a comprehensive rate study. We update our rate study every few years, so this is a special year for us to have a new rate study. The rate study was needed to ensure adequate revenue to support all of our operational and capital needs, such as the large treatment plant projects and other capital programs, regulatory programs, while also integrating ongoing priorities such as water conservation incentives and our rate structure and affordability. So we were thrilled to report on our rate study to the council just a few months ago, January 7. So we won't go into a lot of detail today, but of course, if there are questions on the rate study during our budget presentation, we're happy to answer them today or at a future date. And we are equally thrilled to present our fiscal year 2026 budget. Before I present our slides, I wanted to draw your attention to our fiscal year 2026 budget book. We produce a budget book every year so that we have a lot of detailed information. We'll be presenting a high-level departmental overview today, but the budget book contains a lot of support for the numbers and the priorities that you see in this presentation. Both today's presentation to you as well as the budget book are available on our website for the public to access. Detail in our budget book includes the capital and operations for each one of the four enterprise utilities for this upcoming budget year, as well as projections out to the fiscal year 2030. Appendix A, which starts on page 59 of the budget book, includes rate change comparisons between last year and this year for each of the utilities. For example, accounts. There's no standard or average water use or sewer use customer out there. There's a lot of variability, but we've put together a whole lot of scenarios for you to look at. And again, that's in Appendix A of the budget book. Appendix B, which starts on page 73 of our budget book, includes some additional supplemental information, such as how our rates compare to other communities in the state and other communities in the western region of the United States. It includes the percentage of our rates compared to median household income, because there are affordability guidelines when comparing rates, water and sewer rates, to median household income. And it includes a detailed look at our operating costs as well as our debt service through 2033. And then there are some charts on our water conservation trends as well. We believe this is all very important information, but we're also always sensitive to the amount of time we can spend during a council work session. This is a very collaborative process, and we welcome questions and comments during today's presentation and in the coming weeks. And I also just wanted to note that our whole budget process and what is reflected in the budget book and our presentation was vetted through our Public Utilities Advisory Committee over several weeks from January until March. All right, next slide, please. So just as a side note, I was looking at some old records today. We actually have a lot of interesting records at our offices at 1530 Southwest Temple, and saw that the city's first water main was installed in 1875. The ordinance establishing our department was passed by the city in 1876, and that's what provided for duties and rates to be charged for water infrastructure. So this year marks 149 years for our department. But we also had other infrastructure in place prior to that, dating back to the first diversions of City Creek in 1847, which means all in all, the city and our predecessors have been operating water-related services for about 178 years now. So just a reminder on all of the four utilities that we operate: drinking water, wastewater, stormwater, and street lighting. Particularly with the three water-related utilities, we are tasked with ensuring the viability of major water-related infrastructure. As you know, that is no small task. It's a vast network of treatment plants and distribution and collection systems that need to be operated and maintained, and especially given the age of our city and its infrastructure. For the last 10 years and looking into the future, 10 to 15 years, we remain focused on ensuring that that infrastructure is in good condition. Also, our three water-related utilities are subject to many federal and state regulations to ensure clean drinking water and to ensure that the water that we discharge to the environment from the stormwater system and our sewer systems is clean and meets regulatory requirements, and that we're also managing our water rights and water resources pursuant to many state mandates. The photos we have here, one is up in our big cottonwood watershed where we receive a lot of our drinking water sources. And then we've got some of our crews out cleaning up garbage on the Jordan River, which is a regular event. Next slide, please. Our key budget insights are to invest in major aging infrastructure, comply with the always-changing regulatory landscape, manage our water resources for now and in the future, and make sure that the financial health of our utilities remains sound. Of course, all of these insights are interrelated. We need to maintain financial health of the enterprise funds in order to take care of our infrastructure and meet our regulatory obligations. A key component of our fiscal health is our updated proposed rates, which we did discuss in that previous work session. And it should be noted that as an indicator of our financial well-being, rating agencies have maintained Public Utilities' high bond rating, and that's a AAA standard and POURS rating and a AA1 Moody's rating in each of our revenue bond issuances, including our most recent one this year. Part of the maintenance of those high bond ratings, which provide a benefit to our ratepayers, include the proven track record the city has of adjusting rates on a regular basis alongside with supporting infrastructure investments, compliance with regulations, and water resource management. What this says to our rating agency is that the city is putting a lot of attention in mitigating risks that could have a potential financial impact in a very positive manner. The photo we see here is the City Creek Water Treatment Plant that's currently under construction. This plant was originally constructed in 1953 through 1955, and the total cost at that time for the plant was $780,853. Of course, there's been a lot of improvement to the plant as time has gone along, but I thought that was an interesting statistic. Next slide, please. So we have a couple of slides on revenues and expenses. Our projected revenue is $410,518,000 this year and $7. That's a very exact number. And what I want to draw attention here is a 22% projected increase in operating sales. That comes from our rates charged for water, sewer, stormwater, and street lighting services combined. We are also moving bond and loan proceeds into reserves in anticipation of next year's capital improvement program. Next slide, please. And this is just a chart of revenues looked at in a different way. And what this shows is that the primary sources of our revenues, almost split equally, are from sales, from rates, and bond proceeds. Next slide, please. Expenses, again, we're projecting expenses at $410,518,000 this coming year. And I'd like to draw attention to our decreased CIP this year. This primarily reflects that we're winding down on our sewer treatment plant reconstruction. That should be finished in 2026. And so the costs associated with that plant are starting to wind down as we move along. It's still a substantial amount of our budget, though, at $162.6 million. That is our capital improvements overall. Slide six, please. Next slide. This is just another way to look at our expenditures, and again, drawing attention to CIP at about 40% of our total expenditures. So it still reflects the lion's share of our expenditures, which is a good thing. It shows that we are investing in our aging infrastructure at a pretty healthy rate. I also wanted to highlight on this chart that our debt service annual expenditure is now creeped up a little bit to 14% of our annual expenditure. And that just reflects that we are using revenue bonds for much of the financing of our large capital projects. Next slide, please. And here's a high-level overview of our utilities' fund budget. So this is what each budget is by fund. And you can see that our water utility budget is around $216.6 million. Our sewer utility is $159 million. Stormwater is a little over $26 million, and street lighting is nearly $8.5 million. Next slide, please. We can look at those budgets by category, where overall in the department, our capital and operations expenditures are about equal at 43% each, with debt again at 14%, as well as the budget summary by utility, where we can see that our water utility is about 53% of our overall departmental budget. That reflects some pretty significant capital investment, particularly the City Creek Water Treatment Plant in the water utility. When we looked at this the last couple of years, the sewer utility was the lion's share of our budget. So we're now seeing that we are prioritizing investments in capital in the water utility. Next slide, please. These charts are in our budget book, but this is also another way we like to look at our budget, and that is, what is the actual number of our major infrastructure investments? For water, we're looking at a little over $80 million in infrastructure. Stormwater, about $7.6 million, and sewer is about $73.2 million. I titled this slide "The Era of Treatment" because we are focusing on treatment, whether it's the sewer treatment side or the water treatment side. That doesn't mean that we don't have significant investments in the horizontal infrastructure, the collection system, and the water delivery system. But those treatment plants are in need of rehabilitation across the board, and they tend to be the more costly infrastructure to replace because of the nature of the infrastructure. Next slide, please. And this is just another way to look at the department budget overall, where you can see that our investment into treatment plants is 70% of our capital investment, and our conveyance and collection is still a healthy 21% of our capital investment. Next slide, please. In this year's budget, we are requesting 15 new positions, which will bring our total full-time equivalent employee count to 499. 11 of those 15 positions are for infrastructure maintenance. It's been quite some time since we have increased staff in our operations and maintenance section of our department. And that's really driven by an increase in the size and complexity of our service area. We've expanded a lot of our infrastructure, for instance, into the northwest quadrant. And we've also increased a lot of infill, which has created some need to increase maintenance within already developed areas. We also have increased regulatory requirements for water quality and development reviews. So there are FTEs that are proposed to meet those regulatory requirements. Where we could, we reallocated vacant positions in our department to meet needs. And this is actually a scaled-down version of what our teams wanted to propose this year. We do have needs for 10 additional maintenance staff, but we plan to add those in future budget years. We also break down our allocation of our employees by fund. Our funds do not mix. Our enterprise funds do not mix. But we have an organizational structure where we may work on different aspects of different funds. So for instance, the cost for my salary is broken out between four different utilities. So that's why this looks a little bit funny, where we are requesting 7.9 FTEs for water, 3.6 FTEs for sewer, and 3.5 FTEs for stormwater utilities. Next slide, please. As we've discussed previously, we did complete a rate study this year. We have that online for anyone who wishes to review it. The rate study calculates the cost of service and rates for fiscal years 2026 through 2029. It allocates that cost of service to our different customer classes. That means residential, commercial, industrial, and institutional. It recommends new rate designs to solve existing rate structure issues, which we've discussed. And then really important to note is that we have a robust public engagement program occurring for all of our customer classes associated with the new rate design. Next slide, please. The impacts of rate changes are presented in a number of sample scenarios in our budget book in Appendix A, as I previously mentioned. One thing to note is that our rates do fall within affordability thresholds for median household incomes, but we've also analyzed our rates as compared to lowest quintile household incomes as well. And the annual increase to, an example, single-family residential customer is $119.41, and that encompasses all four of the utility rates. The photo here, actually, we have posted a lot of really interesting information, at least I think it's interesting, about our rates and budget online. One of the items we have are a series of videos. This was taken from an interview that Ben Winslow from Fox 13 News agreed to sit down and talk about rates with me. We took that information and created a number of one- to two-minute videos about different aspects of rates, so why rates are important, what they fund, what are the potential impacts of our rates. So we have those videos, and then we also have a lot of other information on our website for people to find more information about our rate structures. Next slide, please. And this is my last slide, and we typically like to forecast for you what's coming up in the future based on our long-range planning for capital and operations. And this is our projected rate revenue change through the year 2030. And you can see we are staying quite stable for the water, sewer, and stormwater utilities. We are ramping up some work on street lighting and the implementation of our Street Lighting Master Plan through 2029 as well. Next slide. And I would be happy to discuss any questions or comments that you might have, and so is Lisa, because I did all the talking.
Councilmember Young.
Thank you. So just a couple of quick follow-up questions. When we have videos that are posted, how are we distributing those beyond just posting them to our website? Can you just talk to me about what communication channels we're using?
Yeah, and I think we have our engagement staff here today, too. Chloe, do you want to... Chloe Maroney is our Public Engagement Manager and is the genius behind our engagement program.
Mike, I can do that. Okay. Yeah, so we've really focused a lot on transparency and getting the word out about the new rate structure. We have used not only our series of videos, but we've used those in social media. We also send those out through community councils, so they distribute those as well, and also in their newsletters. I'm trying to think of, there's so much stuff that we're doing.
Postcards.
Postcards go out end of April, and those just let people know that the rates are changing, and they can come to these public meetings and leave feedback. So those go out, and then also, we're doing a bill flyer saying the same thing, alerting people that the rates are changing. We're using both Spanish and English for accessibility.
I mean, what else?
That's helpful. Do we have staff going to the community councils to do presentations?
Yes, we are very active with, and by staff, Laura is at almost every single one. Yeah, so that's really important to do it in person as well. But we work really closely and have great relationships with the community councils and the chairs. So yeah, that's also a part of the plan.
Thank you. I appreciate that. I think one of my key takeaways from having the opportunity to learn from Public Utilities is that, you know, sometimes as a resident, we turn on the faucet and we just expect clean water to come out. And we, you know, as a resident who also participates in the electrical grid, sometimes you're like, oh, you know, my electricity went off. I'm sure it'll come right back on. But in learning about, you know, the infrastructure requirements of public utilities, it's just not as simple as, you know, standing up a new electrical line. not as simple as, you know, standing up a new electrical line. Like, these are, you know, comprehensive and really robust infrastructure needs that reach their end of life, as ours have, and need to be replaced. And if we don't, then that expectation, when I go to turn on the faucet, may not happen. I think one of the biggest challenges is because it's a part of, you know, the city that you don't always see, is understanding that comprehensive infrastructure versus then the rates I'm seeing in my bill. And so I appreciate the intense focus and, you know, the proactivity in terms of making sure our residents have an opportunity to learn about it early. It is a really difficult economic time, as I'm sure I don't need to restate for anyone here. I just want to make sure that we're doing our due diligence, and it sounds like we are, but everything that we can do to make sure that our residents aren't surprised when they open up a bill later this year, I just appreciate.
And if I could just add one thing, actually, two things. Earned media, Laura had mentioned the interview with Ben Winslow, but that's also a really key place for us to get coverage, and then obviously when they post online, a lot more eyes see that. And we're doing a reinvestment campaign, which is exactly what you're talking about, and it's showing what your money goes to do. I mean, it is like from fleet to sewer to all of those little pieces that people don't have any idea are a part of our system, and so we're doing a whole instructional, or instructional, educational video on those.
Perfect. And then just one other key request. So as we're developing those kind of informative components, it would also be really great to make sure that all of our individuals who are working on answering phones and emails from constituents who reach out have access to those resources so that we have that type of standardized messaging for the city as part of our response.
So we've taken care of that.
Thank you.
Yeah, everybody should have the same messaging. We put together a packet of possible questions and some answers, and then also what it is that people are going to be getting. So, you know, when they see the rate card, they have questions about the rate card. And so, I mean, we want the message to be consistent, and, I mean, I think that that is probably going to be, that's the way to do it. And so, yeah, it's all over the city, it's, our municipalities have all of that information, just everybody, and, and with that, oh my gosh, I lost my train of thought. I know, it is, it's like, it's like back in my ear, it's weird.
If you haven't sent that to us as council, I would love a copy, just so that I, as well, can also be consistent in case we get outreach from individuals. We're always happy to pass them along, but if it's a simple answer that I can also provide, like I said, I just want to make sure I'm owning my part and being able to also be responsible for educating my residents about what the needs are and how we're addressing that as a city.
You should have that. I sent it, I think, last Friday.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you. Anything else?
Yes, Councilmember Dugan.
Appreciate that, and thank you for all the outreach. That's so valuable across the board, and in something of this nature, it's almost as you can't do enough of it. You got to consistently, I think, you know, these little videos and little vignettes are important, but more than once and repeatedly, and I appreciate also that you're coming to the District 6 Town Hall in May in a couple of weeks, which is also be very valuable. Because one, a couple items, but the first one is, you know, the change of the block's sizes, you know, Block 1 used to go from, I'm just looking at the page, you know, 1 to 10 CCFs, now it's going 1 to 5, and how people can understand what that means to their house, and how they understand where they sit in those blocks now that that changes, and how that costs affects them. And then also adding to the idea that, hey, here's how you can reduce that, or improve your conservation of water. And, you know, we've had the individualized on, here's how much water you should be using at your lot, and educating on that aspect of our water conservation, because I think, I could see us actually, our water usage going down some more because people are now going, oh, I need to, I want to get back to Block 1, which is 1 to 5, instead of being in Block 2, which is 2 to 10, or 6 to 10. So that would be helpful for the residents. And I know we've had, in my districts, we've had some good education on their size of their diameter of the pipe, right? Single-family homes should be 3/4, some of them at an inch, some are an inch and a half, and they have an HOA there, and how we, and make sure that we're really also jumping on those one-offs and making sure we can try to take care of them just because their house has been there for 50 years, and they have an inch and a half pipe, and it should be 3/4, and they had no idea that that made a difference. So I know you're dealing with that, that's just more education, and we got to keep on pushing that across the board, but I appreciate all the work, and I appreciate also the work you got going here. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you for this presentation. Can you help me understand, it seems like if rates are going to be increased and there is not a requirement for water stabilization, can you help me understand how water stabilization affected rates last year, last fiscal cycle, and how that might not be needed this fiscal cycle?
Yeah, so the rate stabilization fee was a temporary fee in order to help us catch up from a combination of years of revenue decrease alongside inflation. And it was also needed because our current rate structure, the current rate design, put a lot of reliability for revenue on the higher tiers of water usage, and we don't have that much water usage anymore in those higher tiers. And so, because about 80% of our overall operations for the water utilities are fixed, it caused an imbalance, or what our rate consultant called this rate tilt. So the new rate structure resolves that rate imbalance through the tiers, but also through the fixed fees on the water and sewer utilities. And in addition to that, the assumption for water demand, we've been very, very conservative in those rates as well. It's always, we have a complicated business model in a lot of ways, where we are asking people to adjust their demand to meet our conservation goals. At the same time, we're doing this, a lot of reinvestment into aging infrastructure, which is costly, and we're not alone in that issue. Water and wastewater utilities nationwide are always evolving and trying to meet that same challenge. But I'm really happy with how our new rates are designed to help us resolve a lot of different, and sometimes competing values of revenue reliability, water conservation, and affordability. Those two blocks, those two first blocks are actually designed for a more affordable, non-discretionary use, so what is needed for indoors.
Okay. Oh, yeah.
And I just wanted to emphasize the impact of your aggressive capital project schedule on that, right? Like, it wasn't just a factor of conservation and the rate structure needing to be updated. The amount of federally mandated and state-mandated construction projects that you guys have been tackling all at once was another major factor, too. While a rate study was planned, but the rate structure wasn't going to generate the revenue needed to cover all of your expenses, when, like Laura said, a one-year temporary stabilization fee was put into place, knowing that once the new rate structure was in place, the stabilization fee would go away because the rate structure would be set to generate the revenue needed for the utilities.
That's correct. Thank you, Leah.
Director Briefer, just as the follow-up, so would it be fair to say that water stabilization rates will not be needed in future fiscal cycles?
That would be fair to say. We are also proposing that our rate studies happen on a more frequent basis. We had been doing them around every five years. There's a lot of change in our sector from a regulatory standpoint, from a water resources perspective, and infrastructure perspective, and the demographics of our community is changing a lot, especially when you break down the different customer classes of residential, commercial, and institutional. So there's a need for us to probably update those rate structures every three years now.
Okay. Thank you. I have a question about, I get a lot of questions from residents about, you know, why is my rate this, or why is my rate that, and it's hard to, or what will my rate be if I make this and this change? And I looked around on the website, and I saw that there's a table that's a little bit helpful for that, but it just says like low, user, medium, and high, but there's not really a way for like, if a person doesn't know if they're low, or medium, or high, or what is, you know, are there like any snapshots or like averages that we can look at that says, you know, this, an average home of like this many people might produce, might expect to pay this much, or a single individual might expect to pay this much? And, you know, we can put lots of disclaimers and asterisks and all that on this table, but it would really help to have some way that we could, that residents could kind of check their own usage. And so I recognize why that would be difficult to do, something in a comprehensive way, but even if there were some examples, just to give people a frame of reference, I think that would be really helpful, and it would be helpful to me, as a council member.
I think we could also change the titles of those. So like, the minimum water use scenario is really like a smaller household with indoor water use only. A low water use scenario that we placed is typical for, it's hard to say typical, but there is no typical, but it would indicate someone who has indoor water use plus some outdoor water use. The medium scenario is a lot higher water use during the summer months than, you know, than typical. But we can certainly work on that communication. In those scenarios, we have put it, we have included the actual quantity of water use, but unless you look back on your previous bills, you don't really know what. And so it's also an opportunity for us to encourage our residents to take advantage of their ability to look at their accounts and what they've used in the past, and talk to our customer service representatives, who can help them through different scenarios of water use and what that means for their water on their sewer bill. We've also, we're also attempting a calculator for each specific utility. So if you want to look at your water utility, you can plug in numbers. If you want to look at your sewer utility, you can. It's a little more complicated to program in, but we are trying to do something like that as well.
Yeah, that, thank you, that I think would be really helpful. I mean, I send lots of people to the customer service line and just say, you know, you can call, and they can tell you exactly, you know, why your rate is, why it is, what it is, but I think we could direct a lot of those calls, too, to some kind of, you know, even if it's snapshots, like, here's this household with this many people that's no, you know, indoor only, this is what they might pay, I think would be helpful. There's, the other issue that I've heard a lot about with stabilization and residents is that they feel like they're almost being like the inverse of what we want, that they feel like they're being punished for being more water-wise. And you've probably gotten a lot of calls about that. Can you speak to that dynamic and what you would say to those residents?
Yeah, well, it is true that the stabilization fee increased the charge on the fixed part of the bill. For this upcoming rate, the fixed part of the bill will be less in almost all cases. That was necessary so that we could ensure the revenue that we needed with the rate structure that we had. The new rate structure attempts to do both things at the same time. It is sending a signal around water use with the goal of incentivizing water conservation and providing that signal while establishing an appropriate fixed fee that helps us with our revenue stability.
Okay. Thank you. Councilmember Chavez.
Thank you, I just had two follow-up questions. I know that we had previously heard from constituents related to new meters or new redefined metering, and I just wanted to see how that's been reflected in consumption data. I know that that was something that was unexpected, we caught the error, but just wanted to hear how that data has been transformed or what we might see reflected from that.
I think maybe the error was on the fire meters, maybe? Was that the, is that the error that?
It wasn't there, I mean...
Yeah, because what had happened...
Do you want to speak into the mic for a second? Thank you.
So if we're talking about the fire meters, right, because there were a lot of folks that have a fire meter, a detector checker, something like that, that's really not, quote, "a meter," when we were attempting to work through programming for the size on the rate stabilization fee, it was added to those services, and it was like, we found out, stopped, and then gave credit to all of those. It was, you know, there were businesses, multiple sizes of things, and just recently, there's a lot of them were like, well, at my $20 a month, I'm not going to use up $400 very soon, so could you please do that? And so what we've done now to program with the new rates, we've done some really extensive testing. They started putting things into test for us in February. They're actually taking books of data and running it through this test billing so we can, we know what the results should be, so we can make that comparison and hopefully do that. And we're also, we had one today, we're looking at all the checkboxes, does it say hydrant? Does it say fire? Does it say lawn? So we're trying to clean that up as well.
We're training our billing system to do something different, and it should be noted that we are working to replace our billing system. It's reaching the end of its useful life, and the programming for these kinds of changes is becoming more and more difficult. So we've been working with IMS and Director Bentley and his team to identify, and actually just finishing interviews on that contract.
We will hopefully have a project underway at the beginning of August on that, but, you know, that takes time to implement. But all of these things that we've kind of experienced through this process are things that we kept in mind as we were reviewing this, to say, what type of flexibility is built into these systems, what kind of accessibility for the customer, right? Without having to pick up the phone and call, what can they do?
That's great. My final question was just related to water loss. I've heard constituents share, whether it's a commercial, you know, development such as Trolley Square, when they had their pipe, their water main line break, and they became the responsible tenants that had to pay that very gargantuan bill, or I've heard from, you know, a neighbor that is in District 3 that had a water main line break that was in relation to their parcel or their dwelling, and ended up with a $3,000 bill. Can you tell me a little bit about how we're notifying folks of aging infrastructure around them that they might be responsible for that could inadvertently affect them?
Yeah, we do have information about the distinction between what is the responsibility of a private homeowner or business on the private side of the infrastructure, and when there is a break with a large water bill, we do offer some assistance. It's a one-time assistance where if they can show us that they've repaired the infrastructure, that they pay, I think it's a 50% reduction in cost, but they have to show us the receipt that they repaired it. And part of that is, you know, we need to make sure that our residents understand that they have responsibility in maintaining the... they have responsibility in maintaining the infrastructure on the private side. I think that's a really good question, though, and we probably could do some additional engagement around, we've been doing this with actually the LED Service Line Program, trying to educate around what is the responsibility of individual homeowners and, and landowners. But that's a great point that you raise.
Thank you. I'm hearing this more and more, and it's coming as a surprise, and many individuals don't have, you know, the funds to be able to fix that infrastructure, and it ends up being very expensive. I'd love to understand if we have information on how to report that, or how to better prepare private property owners, whether it's commercial or residential, about those infrastructure maintenance costs.
Yeah. Thank you.
Yep.
One of the things, as we've been speaking with council members about the purpose rate, like what the rate structure is going to look like, and what, as Councilmember Wharton was asking, like how do the average customers know what they can anticipate their bill will look like beginning July 1st? One of the things we were brainstorming was the idea of having some sample bills from different types of households, even represented amongst our staff members, and kind of redacting those bills and doing some samples for that. And it sounds like maybe we could, we would be happy to brainstorm with you guys, meet with your staff, if you'd like us to, to just see what could that look like and what could be maybe another follow-up briefing we could do with some of those on slides, just to show the comparison?
That's a great idea.
So that people could see, like how does the stabilization fee reduction look like to a bill? And then how does the rate structure, the new rate structure increase it? So people can see what that net change is over, over, like between June 30th and July 1st, so to speak? And anything we could do to help with that or make it available to community councils so that even like a sample, you know, brick bungalow near Liberty Park, here's what you could expect if you have this many people in your household, or, you know, something like that, that we could just work through with you and just help with that demonstration and those characteristics. We would, we would be happy to do that. And in our conversations with council members, we've had some interest that that might be helpful, too.
Yeah, that's a fantastic idea. We'd be happy to work with you on pulling some of those, like wintertime bills and, and especially, we don't, in our, with, with the information we have, all we have is an account number and an account name, so we don't know the characteristics of any individual home. But, but to your point, if we have some examples where we do have that information, like with our own city staff, and we can, you know, redact the information and present that, we would, that would be great. I'm happy to volunteer my own, if you'd like.
Very frugal.
I know. A water-wise example, probably. Yeah. So I, I appreciate that because that is great. Because as Laura mentioned, we don't know the characteristics of someone's household. We don't know if it's one person, we don't know if it's five. But I think if there are individuals who are willing to participate and we redact that and can say, well, this is a household comprised of X, that would definitely be helpful.
Yeah, that'd be great.
Yeah.
I'll do it, too.
We, we really appreciate the collaborative brainstorming on that because it is, it's a, it's a hard engagement effort because there's so much variability across our system. And, and as was mentioned earlier, a lot of the, the infrastructure is out of sight and out of mind, and, and oftentimes not thought about until you get that.
Bill.
Bill in the mail, so, yeah.
Perfect.
Thank you.
All right. Let's move on to our agenda item number six, which is budget amendment number five for fiscal year 2024-25, follow-up discussion. Okay, so for this, we've got Jennifer Bruno, who's going to be here. And at the table, we've got Sylvia Richards from City Council staff, and Ben Ludke, Deputy Chief Financial Officer.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. Oops, sorry, go ahead.
Oh, yeah. Oh, that's what I thought. We have Greg Cleary as well, and Mary Beth is here in the back in case we need her to weigh in as well. Okay, go ahead. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. There's just a few new items from the last discussion. I did want to orient the council to the questions that you, several of you asked in the first briefing, have answers in attachment A, and so reference those just because of time. We won't be able to go, you know, question by question through those, but there's a lot of really great information that the administration provided in response to those questions. And if you have follow-up for staff, we're happy to do that. So with that, I'll go to several of the new items. In order to avoid, potentially avoid, knock on wood, a budget amendment number six that we sometimes have to cram into the end of the budget, the administration identified several items that we could add to this budget amendment to address maybe more timely needs before the end of the fiscal year. And because of a noticing issue, we had the benefit of having to extend the public hearing to May 6th anyway, so it seemed like a good opportunity to save some processing time. So I will go through some of those items. The first item is A16, so these are being proposed by the administration. It's a re-scope of $250,000 from the mayor's office existing personnel budget to support National League of Cities 2025 City Summit Conference for NLC. And I believe they've been in discussions with several council members about that. They do expect that the event may cost more than the $250,000, but are hopeful that early planning and fundraising will help bridge that gap. So I don't know if, I'm, because I haven't had a huge chance to read all these, I, I don't know a lot about them, so the administration, if you guys want to come up and talk more about it, feel free, or if council members want to ask questions, I'll just pause there.
Like the amendment says, this funding is going to go to some of the early stages planning for the National League of Cities and Towns Conference, which will be here in Salt Lake City this coming November. This money would be used in part to do things like booking venues for some of our contractual obligations for hosting this conference, but in addition to that, it would also enable us to bring on someone who would manage sponsorships for the event for us. And we've had some conversations with potential candidates for that, and we feel really confident that they would be able to bring in a majority of the fundraising for that event.
Councilmember Lopez Chavez?
Thank you, Mr. Chair. I wanted to better understand, will other members of the Utah League of Cities and Towns, will they be contributing to this conference as well? Or is it primarily Salt Lake City that's the main contributor?
It's a great question. So the Utah League of Cities and Towns as an organization will not financially be contributing to this, although they are helping us with the planning and they're a partner in all of the work. As far as other city go, other cities go, we are working right now on what are called mobile workshops for the event, which I believe you've been to some of the mobile workshops before. If those workshops happen outside of the city, there is an opportunity there to plan both, to plan and partner financially with some of our partner cities in the Utah League around that. So I think it just depends on how some of that content goes. But a lot of the, a lot of the sponsorship money will come down to how sponsors are represented at the event.
All right. Any other questions on that? Okay.
We can move on to the next item?
Yeah, I think the only thing I would, oh, no, you're good. As somebody that attended, you know, the, I forget what they call it, the mid, the mid-year summit last year in Tampa, and I think a few of us went, it was really fascinating to see how they highlighted and marketed this event. And I'd love to hear if this isn't, how fundraising goes, maybe in three months or something, to better understand if we need to increase this amount to have a successful event.
Definitely. I think that this is something that we're prepared for to be sort of a moving target. The individuals that we've spoken to about sponsorship fundraising are very confident about the amount that we've set out to raise. And the National League has been an incredible partner. We have access to other host city prospectus documents to sort of understand what they have made available in terms of sponsorships for organizations and how we might be creative around that, and what we can engage potential sponsors on.
Yeah, that's great. Do you, did you publish the chart, the amount you're going to be fundraising by chance? I'm not sure I said that.
No, we haven't yet. It's a range. I would say the range that we're looking to fundraise is in the $300,000 to $500,000 range. So we've, we've kind of got a broad range. Yeah.
Thank you.
We, and there is a working group on this that Councilmember Puy is, is our council representative on, so he'll have more details, too, as we get closer.
Yes. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mr. Chair?
Oh, yes, Councilmember Puy.
So, thank you for allowing me. Sorry for, I had to step out of my desk for one minute, and it's when this item was discussed. But I thank you for the presentation. Certainly it's something that I value greatly, the, the learning that we, we have gotten from NLC has been very valuable, and the connections that helped our city. It's just very important to me. I will also, in supporting this, this, this allocation for funding, I would like to ask the administration for regular reporting in the next, if this were to pass, for regular reporting, you know, every, every month or so, or, you know, to, to make sure that we are, the whole board, the whole council knows what, what is happening, to make sure that we can all collaborate in some way, shape, or form to make sure that this is a success.
We would be so happy to do that.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you. The next item is A17, which is, the administration is proposing to use $5.2 million in one-time funds from funding our future fund balance to purchase public safety and streets maintenance vehicles at a time when the federal tariffs are on, on a pause, to take advantage of that, the uncertainty that could come if those tariffs go back into effect. This write-up is directly from the administration's transmittal, so they've provided a list of exactly what would be purchased with that, with those funding, and the reason that it is eligible to be spent from funding our future is because of the public safety category and the streets maintenance category. So they are looking for a straw poll from you guys on this one, just because of the timing urgency.
Okay. And someone want to, okay. This, so.
Do we need, do we need?
Skipping that step?
Yep.
Okay, well, let's, just so that everybody knows what we're polling, the straw poll is for?
$5.2 million from funding our future fund balance for public safety and street maintenance vehicles.
Okay.
To proactively avoid needless increases in price.
Yes. Okay. And that's a thumbs up from everyone. Okay? Seven zero.
This next item, A18, so that was, to my knowledge, that's the only urgent item that the council needs to straw poll. So all of these others, we can follow up with questions and we'll have hearings about them. So the next item is a request for additional police overtime. The police department has utilized a significant amount of vacancy savings to get them through excess usage of overtime to date, but is looking at overspending that if, if this budget amendment is not approved. So this happens usually in budget amendment number six, we will have a police overtime kind of true-up because it's such a moving target of what is actually needed in the police department for overtime. So they're requesting a million dollars, and that would come from general fund balance. And really, it's just increased uptick in police calls for service. You don't need to straw poll it. And in, and in fact, it's probably procedurally better to wait for the public hearing and then, and then we can take action.
We're classically conditioned.
I know, sorry.
Take back my thumb up.
Okay. Oh, Councilmember Lopez Chavez?
Yeah, I just wanted to see, is this, you know, I guess, all enforcement officers, PCRT, any kind of role that the police department is, or operations that are being utilized and expressed?
I, it looks like the mayor's coming up to answer that.
Yeah, thanks, council member. Yes, and some of those, or a lot of those, you can see on the Public Safety Plan dashboard. So you can see the increase in hours, locations that a lot of that efforts are happening at, and you can also see the declining crime in most of those areas. So we're seeing really good results, and if there's other ways or other metrics that the council would like to see us do reporting on, whether it's in the Public Safety Plan dashboard or otherwise, we're totally open to that.
Okay.
Thank you. The next is item A19, which is a re-scope of $50,000 from the current mayor's office budget for language access, and it would go to, to nonprofits to help with citizen classes, application fees, English language classes. The full description write-up from the administration is in the staff report there. And again, we don't need to straw poll this, but this would just enable that funding to be spent. The next item is a council-added item, I1, that's that Advantage Services.
Ben? Can I ask, in accordance with this, I know that they rotate where they do naturalization ceremonies. Can we host one of those soon at the city hall?
Oh, host at a naturalization ceremony? I, I don't know who we contact, but we can figure that out.
Yeah, we've asked about that before, too. I wondered if we can do that.
Yeah.
We can, I'd really like to do that.
Do some digging into that. Hosting naturalization ceremonies at city hall? I don't know.
We'd be happy to look into that. I've always been to them at the Capitol, and there are several hundred people that attend, between those who are taking the oath and the families who attend. So I don't know that we have the capacity here, but perhaps there are smaller events, and if you guys are interested, we can reach out.
Or maybe do it outside.
Yeah. Or at the library.
Because it is, it is a big event.
Yeah.
Mr. Chair?
I, I think it'd be really important for us to.
It's pretty, it's pretty.
It's a great idea.
Thank you.
It's a wonderful event. I think outside would be kind of cool.
Councilmember Puy.
I, I obviously went through the process myself, and there are large, I actually found out a little bit about this. They, they have a rotation and a list that they go through, different entities that host them, and there are some that are smaller than others. It depends on the, the season, I guess. So I would, I would love to learn more about how we get there, too. So I'm excited about this, this idea.
I think Roxanna or Alana on our team will be happy to look into this. So we'll report back perhaps at one of the updates at the beginning of work session.
Thank you.
Awesome. Thank you.
Also on this item, do we, is there a reason that we would, like, what's the reason that we need this now as opposed to like during the budget? Like, is there something in particular that happened that we should know about going into this budget that we need to, like, maybe fund better in the future?
This is current fiscal year funds being re-scoped, so it's just one time. If you wanted to look at it in the annual budget, you certainly could, but these are one-time funds available this fiscal year in the mayor's office budget.
So it's more just like, we have some extra funds, and so we're going to put them towards this.
Correct.
Important thing. Okay, got it. That makes sense. Thanks.
The next item, we discussed on, at the last work session, the increase to Advantage Services cleaning that is being funded out of CANS vacancy savings. There are two new items, council-added items to, the way I'm, I'm kind of thinking about this is that it's almost similar to the mayor's request about the language access program. It's a re-scope or maybe a refining the scope of council communication budget items. We have an item on the agenda following this briefing to talk more about the communication budget policy, because it's quite out of date, and these items didn't necessarily neatly fit into that policy, and so that's why we're bringing them to the full council, just so that we have crossed all our eyes, crossed all our Ts and dotted all our Is. So the first item is adding, both District 4 and District 5 were interested in contributing to the Mead Avenue underpass, and I would love if Councilmember Mono or Councilmember Lopez Chavez would want to speak to that.
Yeah, Mr. Chair, if I may?
Yes, go ahead.
This is great. In conversations with the residents of Central 9th, which encompasses a part in District 4 and then a part in District 5, are seeking for funding to help. help. I know that we have recently allocated funding for the footsall, but they need continued funding for the rest of the infrastructure in Mead Underpass. So I was seeking to, I don't know if it's correct to say reallocate, but to use funding that is in the communication budget for District Four and to extend that in the amount of $3,000 to help fund some of that infrastructure gap as placemaking and signage and proper marketing materials for the underpass.
And I should have clarified, as the board of the Community Reinvestment Agency, you guys also approved $50,000 for this project, towards this project. I think, well, it was for other things too. Okay.
I, I have questions, but I think we can probably save them for the next discussion. Okay?
Okay. And then the next item is a public, or well, art in District Four that would be public-facing. It would be on private property. And I'm sorry, Councilmember Lopez Chavez, if you want to explain it, I'm happy to turn the time over to you or I can.
Yeah, this is great. In my district, we've been able to utilize the communication, communication budget in traditional and kind of non-traditional ways through communicating with the residents in this district. Placemaking through art has been something that's been elevated and has been a very arduous process to expand and scope in District Four. So in talking with the legal team, this felt like the right approach for one-time contributory funding for public-facing art in the district. And then I'm seeking to re-scope what would be communication budget for that placemaking through art.
Okay. So, yeah, I also have a question about this, but I think we'll just keep it. Yeah.
So the process or the procedure on all of these items, all of these budget amendment items, is that they will have a public hearing tonight. We'll have to continue that public hearing because, like I said, of just some noticing issues. And then, and then the council can consider action on either May 6th or the following meeting. And, Mr. Chair, I don't know, because of timing, if we wanted to go through all of the housekeeping items or if, similar to the questions and answers, maybe the council could just take a look at Section D. Those are housekeeping items that are more kind of accounting in nature, a lot, some really interesting things. But just in the interest of time, I don't know if you wanted me to go through all of those or?
Mr. Chair, just, Mr. Chair, just one?
Yes, Councilmember Dugan.
On item I3, after speaking with Councilmember Lopez Chavez, the art in D4, this is also, it's going to be maintained by the private property owner and there's not going to have any burden on the drain from the city resources afterwards. So I just want to make sure that the public realizes that this is not public art on private property that we're going to maintain. We're going to help that out, but they're going to maintain it after that. So it's, it's not a, an ongoing expense to maintain the art. Just to, just re-
Mr. Chair.
Yes, Councilmember Pui.
So this is, sorry for the, for the, maybe the questions have been already answered. Just to wrap my head around this. So this is allocating money in the council communications budget for public art in private or public? Where is the art located?
Yes, so it's coming from the communication budget of the independent District Four budget fund. And then it's placed on a privately-owned parcel that's public-facing. Currently today, the parcel placement is Seventh East and Sixth South in between facing kind of the Trolley Square area.
And we, so, and Jennifer, did you, did you said that there is, sorry for the, she's calling you by your first name. The, is the RDA is contributing or is that a different, different process you're talking about?
That was a different, that was the Mead Avenue underpass. Yeah.
Yeah. So, so one of the concerns I have with, with this approach, and I love this idea, is that, is the fact that there is a private property involved in this. Because this is technically benefiting, you know, yes, it's benefiting the, the whole community by, by, by being able to access the view of this. But we are placing, we are basically subsidizing and improving the value of a private, private property with, with public dollars without the, the normal process to go about this. There is, this, we do these things, similar things like this in the city. But I struggle with, with the avoidance of the public, the, the, the normal process to access funds like this, or city funds, I guess. So in general, I love the, you know, the sentiment, but I, I struggle with the precedent that this could set where, you know, any private individual could ask for something placed in their, in their property and, you know, and say, you know, you did it once, so why, you shouldn't do it again. So I, that would be my main concern about this. I think that is a, is a very clever idea, but I'm not sure the process is the correct one.
Just to speak to the process a little bit, because this was a definite brain twister when the idea was raised. We, we were discussing with the attorney's office if the public, public benefits analysis made sense because that is the typical process by which the council can decide to allocate public dollars for the benefit of a private person because it's in the interest of the public. So you kind of, you make the determination that this is in the interest of the public. And in talking to the attorney's office, they felt that the budget amendment would actually satisfy the spirit of the public benefits analysis process because it is a council vote. It's a clarification of how public dollars are spent. And it's disclosed that to the public that these public dollars are being spent this way, which is the purpose of that section of state code, which is if, if public dollars are being spent for the benefit of a private entity, the council needs to vote and disclose.
Yeah. But my point is, not necessarily that we are meeting the letter of the law, but my point is that we are going, we're going to, in some ways, to uncharted territories by, by, by improving a private property with public dollars, not in the normal manner. You know, so that, that is my concern. But I, I love the clarification that the, the disclosure itself fulfills the law. I do, I do struggle with, with the, if this was a, a little park, if, if this was something, a piece of land that is maybe like state-owned, that is, you know, in the limbo, is government-owned in some level, it feels different to me, much like the underpasses under, under the freeway where there's, you know, no one really benefits but their community. It, it feels like it has a different flavor to me. So that's my thought.
Yeah, I think you raise great points, Councilmember Pui. In going back and forth on this, I think I certainly don't want to create a process that, as you said, has unintended consequences, but also recognizing that there is difficulty today navigating art placement in districts. The great thing about this parcel, and I hope to clarify and provide more information for you, is it's currently owned by a nonprofit called The Arts Organization. And they seem, they work with Make Salt Lake, which is another CRA-funded organization. So the, the property itself is an historic landmark overlay as well. And so trying to identify what, what would make a good steward and working with the legal team to not create a process that is non-existent, but to ensure that this falls within the scope of placemaking through art and public art and to reflect those community needs and values and not just for one private property owner, but rather the intended consequence of the entirety of the district and to make this a true public-facing place.
We, we're going to have a discussion about this right after this. So-
This project too?
Uh huh.
Okay.
This specific project? If there's a question about this specific project, it'd be nice.
Oh, yeah, that's right.
I'm just wondering, are we, even though maintenance is on them, is the determination to, it's a mural that we're, that we would be supporting?
It would be a sculpture by definition.
A sculpture?
Yeah, this is not a mural. Uh-uh.
Okay. So do we have any control over the term for which it's preserved? Or if, like a new executive director were to come in, would they be able to say this doesn't fit the aesthetic anymore or something like that? And would they have to go by?
I think those are questions we can follow up with, the legal team, to get more clarity.
Will they have to go by our art disposal standards because it's funded by the city or?
My understanding was because it's an HLC, HLC is going to have more of an supervision or supervisory role because of placement, but not art design review. And I'm happy to get more clarification on that. But this, I think those are great questions. In terms of, where I focused on was making sure this was one-time contributory as to not put the city in a position where there would have to be ongoing maintenance or security features. That amount included the bid. This is, this is just a partial contribution. This is not fully funding either.
Okay. Thank you.
And, okay, so I'll just ask some of my questions too. So who, so the city would not own this, this piece of art?
Correct. That's my understanding, that this is just contrib-, one-time contribution.
Okay.
Not ownership or partial ownership.
And I guess another precedent that concerns me with this is that, like typically when the city buys or invests in art, like we, as the elected officials, don't go and choose what we're going to invest in and what we're not. And that's, I think, important because then we're not politicizing the decision. We're buying art based on what our art design board has reviewed and said that this is like, this is why we think that this is worth the investment in the public, from the public funds. And with this, it's, I understand what you're saying, that like, this is reflecting the values and the needs of the community, but who's making that, that determination?
Yeah. So that's a great question. Right now, the determination is Make Salt Lake and The Arts Organization.
Right. Okay. So, but like, let's say that we, you know, approved the money, but then you or I or any of us decide we don't like the final product or, I imagine it's probably going to be more abstract than representational, but let's say that it was something that I found like, oh, this is not at all what I envisioned it would be and I find this offensive. Can I pull the funding back at that point? Can you, or if we vote to fund it and then you don't like the ultimate outcome, like, can you stop the funding from going to it because it came originally from your communication budget?
I don't have an answer to that right now. I would have to ask legal, I would assume.
I think that once the funds leave the city, it, it would be complicated to get it back unless you executed a contract with whoever is taking the money that required approval, maybe, an approval process from you. I think that that's typically what the Art Design Board functions as, is that they're the final kind of arbiter of, you know, you give them the money and then they approve it. But just thinking through, you could, you could execute, although the council doesn't typically execute contracts. That's complicated. I don't know.
Yeah, it's just, like, I also don't want to be, like Councilmember Pui said, like, I want more art everywhere in the city. I want, and I, whether it's private or publicly-funded or a mix of both, or we're doing public-private partnerships. But I also feel like there's some security there in the processes that we have put in place so that it's not, you know, one person or an elected body or that we can't be accused of like politicizing those decisions because there's a process of how it's determined and how it's paid for. And I just really worry that in doing it in this way, we're basically telling, you know, anybody that if you can convince a council member to put their money on it, then there's sort of this other path to getting something that where you bypass these other, like, things that are in place. And that, and that gives me a lot of anxiety because even if I really like this one, what if there's one from a council member in the future that we don't like? And that we feel like doesn't reflect the values of the city. Like, to me, that feels like it's really getting into a dangerous place. So that's why I'm concerned about it. But we can, I think that having the discussion that we're going to have in just a moment will kind of help us figure out how we're going to navigate things like this. Okay, thank you. Okay, is there anything else on the budget amendment?
So I would just ask that council members look through the housekeeping section. That's Section D, starting on page, oh, we lost our page numbers. Sorry. Starting on page three or four of the staff report, the new staff report. So look through those and please let us know if you have any questions. We can schedule another follow-up briefing if we need to at the May 6th meeting. But they are quite housekeeping in nature and so I don't expect that there's many questions. So, thank you.
Thank you. Okay, so we're on to Agenda Item Number Seven, which is a council policy discussion on our communication budget. And we've got Jennifer Bruno and Leah Weaver who are going to help us through it.
I think you should credit the former executive director Cindy Gus Jensen for the staff report as well.
Wait, what?
Cindy, well, Cindy's work product, Cindy's work product is throughout this memo. And so credit must be given where credit is due.
Yes, excellent.
Absolutely. Okay. I have a little bit of info just to introduce this topic and even more so than the conversation you all just had during your budget amendment discussion. But I know we're running a little late, so just tell me when you want me to cut it out. Okay. Let's see. Obviously, we're here today to review the council's communication budget policy. It's one of the sections in your current policy manual, but it is really outdated. And so I thought that it would be helpful to just kind of review what is help, what staff is looking for in terms of direction to make sure that the policy accurately reflects the current uses that council members have been using. Each district is allocated a certain amount of money per year. And typically, those, the money has been used towards communication efforts as outlined in the policy. That has, as council members have used the funding in different new ways to reach their districts and to connect and create identity, community identity and things, the types of uses of the funding have not been updated in the policy. The policy helps us make sure, like Jennifer was mentioning earlier, that the fiscal procedures are met in terms of making sure the use of public funds is described and made available to the public in a transparent way. And so we need your direction on how you would like the policy to be updated to make sure that it's reflecting current practice and to also tease out some of these conversations as funding for an art project or other similar type ideas come up and council members and staff know how to proceed as those items are requested. When we talked through how to structure this briefing, we thought that it might be helpful if I just spent a moment to go back through the history of this section of the policy manual. So I wanted to take a minute to do that. It's just helpful to see how it's evolved over the years. And so Jennifer teases me about, how far back are you going to go? 15 or 20 years ago at least, the office did, had already been allocating money for each council member to do some outreach and a district meeting each year. So council members would schedule a meeting out in your district and the money would be used to pay for any of the expenses related to that district meeting. I can't remember the exact budget amount at the time, but it was fairly minimal. And because it was minimal, council members, as they could, would supplement those budgets with personal funds so that they could do another mailing or hold another meeting or other types of activities. Obviously, that created some equity issues, as you can imagine. And the policy was updated to both increase the amount available and to clarify the policy purpose for the use of those funds. At the time, and I think has been in the policy since that time, the outlined uses included mailings and communication efforts from the council member to residents about city issues. Number two, district meetings and related items such as copies, rental fees and refreshments to support the meeting. Number three, community building events and activities. Number three, community building events and activities, whether hosted by the council member or not, but the policy outlined the option for using up to $500 to support an event or activity that somebody else was hosting, as long as it was free and open to the public. Those terms um, still exist in the current policy and are a little bit outdated, as you each know. There were some other tricks and, and issues over the years with these items as well, including an inconsistent process for, for outside entities to apply for the funds. Um, and at some point a few years ago, the budgets were increased again to ensure that enough funding was available to do needed outreach to all parts of the city. At these, um, as these items and changes have come up, unfortunately, the policy language has not kept up, so it is, as I've said, outdated. And that's why we're here today. So we wanted to just re- reconcile with council members what the current uses are and what new ideas are about how the communication funds can be used. Um, and we also wanted to get some clarity for when we are receiving requests from outside entities, whether it be a recognized community organization, like a community council, or another nonprofit or government entity, how you would like those uh, uses and those requests handled. Um, obviously, we know, and council members, um, a normal part of the conversation is council members pointing out how important having access to these communication funds are. Um, it's important to connect with your communities, whether through mailings, events, the expanded use of swag items that are just handed out to community members at events, um, or whatever else the use might be. And so, again, we just wanted to make sure that we're helping to achieve that while also following the fiscal procedures and ensuring there's transparency for the public to anticipate how these funds would be used. If you can stand it, um, I know uh, Nick's straw poll chart was really popular earlier, um, and so I made a quick one that we could, that could just help us um, navigate through these next steps. Um, and I'll just pause there in case anyone has any comments or questions before we walk through this, sorry.
Yeah, I just wanna say at the outset of uh, this discussion that I think that probably, like, any one of us could point to any other of us and say, I don't think that that was a good use of yours' funds, or I don't think that that um, makes sense with my vision of what the policy is. Um, and so I think in that sense, um, I just wanna keep that in mind for everybody that like, we're not trying to, in having this discussion, we're not trying to single out one person or even one idea, but we just don't have um, a framework right now in place that um, is, is working, um, and uh, it's, so to, in try, in order to try to prevent even further going down this path, that's why we wanna have the discussion right now. So I hope that everybody will participate in it, knowing that that's like the spirit that, that I hope we all intend, that's certainly the spirit I intend as the council chair, to put this on the agenda. So um, let's dive in.
Perfect. Yeah, and just to echo that, um, there are some suggestions on here that really are just meant to be a starting point for discussion, and staff is happy to take council direction and move however you would like us to move forward. Um, so the first um, question we wanted to go over with you is just a confirmation that um, it sounds like we need to expand the policy, the purpose of this policy, to be more inclusive to items that might be um, designed and handed out, like the stuff we all get, or swag items. Um, and we just wanted to confirm that the council does want that, the policy to be expanded for that. And then we have a suggested new title for the policy section, if that's true.
Wait, you're saying, do we wanna expand to swag, or do we wanna expand beyond swag?
Um, I think we have an item below that will expand what community building activities would look like.
Okay.
And so really, this question is, do you want it, do you want the policy to anticipate broader use of the funds for community building activities? And then we will define what those are.
I would like to get away from a paradigm where we're limiting uses or things, and instead expansively thinking about empowering council people to be responsive to their districts in whatever way makes the most sense for their district. So for me, it's a lot less about quantifying a use and a lot more about qualifying an impact of an expenditure. Um, just because like, three or four years ago, none of us would have think, thought about doing like a TikTok campaign, but you know, like, here we are in a world where thirty-second clips are what determines what people believe whole-scale, right? So like, we're just in such a rapidly evolving environment. I do want accountability, but it's so much less for me about a particular use, about a t-shirt or a bag, or a, you know, the, it's about like, the impact that we're having as we facilitate the usage of these funds.
So more goal statements could be included?
Uh, yeah, I think the litmus test should be, or, by this art project, are the constituents of district four getting communicated that their engagement with the city is valued, and you know, like, like, like some kind of, and I'm, I'm not passing a judgment, but it was just the most recent thing, so I'm, please, please don't feel targeted.
Oh, no.
But, but you know, like, like for me, that's, first of all, I don't look at anyone else's expenditures. I assume you all are subject matter experts on your districts, and so whatever you have to do to reach your district, I am your biggest cheerleader. Um, but understanding that they're public dollars and that there has to be some metric for accountability and responsiveness, that for me is how I would prefer to approach something.
Mr. Chair.
Uh, yes, go ahead.
I, I, I liked the idea there, but I, I also believe that there's probably still needs to be some type of uh, boundary on that, even, even that line, because I think you could, don't think of this council, think of seven other people that don't think the same way, and that could be, uh, you could see it going off the deep end on some areas. So I think there's, I like that vision, but I also wanna make sure that there's still some.
I agree. Love without boundaries is not love. But, but for me, it's so much less about t-shirts or bags, you know?
Yes, yes, I'm not, I'm, right.
Yeah, certainly.
Oh, thanks. Councilmember Lopez Chavez.
Sorry, Mr. Chair, thank you. Um, I'd, I'd be interested in expanding the policy, I think to reiterate. I myself, um, in my first term in fiscal year twenty-four, twenty-five, sent out three mailings related to policy updates that I worked on, uh, took advantage of the Public Utilities Newsletter twice, which is really expensive, um, swag, and then uh, lawn signage. Seeing the excess funds is when I thought it'd be interesting to look up, uh, obviously, this policy as is, is not, um, I think could use some confining and refining for sure, um, but trying to understand placemaking, we, um, not to bring that up immediately, but uh, that is when the allocated dollar amount I looked at could be utilized in a way that doesn't create redundancy through just a typical expression of communication, but I'd love to include social media marketing, um, other types of more utility-based, and then I personally would like to see the inclusion of um, contemporary either signage or art placement. Um, and I think allowing a little bit of, of flexibility, but also framework and guidance, so that way it's not, um, you know, the misuse of public funds, but in a way that the district can communicate or engage the public in a meaningful dialogue or way that that is acute to that. I, I think for me, in District Four, the mailings were just as critical and equally expensive, they're not cheap to send out, um, as much as uh, an art placement such as in Budget Amendment Five. And so I, I like the amount, but just for the purpose of the question asked, um, I'd like to expand the policy, and I think a title change probably makes sense, since this is um, beyond just traditional communication, I think.
So all this, conceptually, I don't disagree with anything that Councilmember Pichu said. I, I guess I would say, in practice, is there something that, is there an example of what we're trying to emulate? Because uh, I feel like I can think of like a lot of needs in my district, that, but I also feel like it's, I don't know, like a situation where an, a legislative representative has like a discretionary pool of money to, to give out. Uh, so, like, if there's a way that other, that, that exists somewhere else, that, that, where there's like uh, boundaries that are put in place, that's, I would love to know that, cuz that's my concern.
I believe, um, and I'm just remembering from when APA was there, several years ago, the Chicago um, Board of Commissioners, I think they're called, do have um, discretionary accounts that are in the millions.
Are they aldermen?
Um, yes, and I think that's the point I was gonna make, is that it's a different form of government. They're a legislative body that also oversees.
Has executive powers.
Yeah, and I believe um, New York's City Council, New York City's City Council is similar. Um, they're just a different form of government. So I think the form of government is the tricky business here, is the tricky part here, because um, we, we don't do, obviously, our, our funds can't do administrative things, but there is a gray area where our funds can do things if they're like, finite, I mean, technically, we could spend money on an event, or public art, or um, painting a mural, or, you know, there's nothing prohibiting a legislative body from allocating funding for that.
Oh, yeah, of course. Yeah, no, I just think, I, so here's how, here's how like I'm approaching it, is um, I think about if, if it wasn't my city and it wasn't my friends on the council, my colleagues, um, but it was still public money, like I, there are lots of legislators um, at various levels in this state, I'm not talking just state legislators, I mean, people in legislative roles, that uh, I would not feel great a- as a voter saying, or as a taxpayer, being like, I think they should all have some discretionary funds to use on things that they deem appropriate. And, and so if I can't say that about another group that I'm not connected to and that I don't have any interest in, and that I'm not friends with, like, then I think it's probably a concern. Um, so to me, that's like kind of a litmus test that worries me. Um, whereas like, if it's communication, me communicating with my constituents, like that, to me, feels like very much within the mission of, of what the council policies, or the council's office's job is, um, is to, to analyze and give us policy analysis, but also to communicate with residents about what we're doing and ways that they can engage with us. Um, and so that seems like it's much more like in a clear scope, whereas like, you know, apply to Chris Wharton's District Three budget, um, does not, in my view. But Councilmember Mono, go ahead.
Thanks, yeah. I, I, I've been going back and forth on this question, I know it's, we've been, we've talked about it in different meetings, um, chair by chair and whatnot. I, I am, I can see both sides to a certain degree, so, and I just wanted to, for a second, like, argue the side of being more lenient, um, not saying that that's where I will land, but I, I have had some thoughts about why it might make sense for us to be more lenient on the use of the funds, that I'd just like to get out on the table for consideration. I, I, I think as long as we each have the same amount for our districts and we, but we have more flexibility with how to use it, I think the funds may be able to be used for things that are of greater impact. I, I, I think it's interesting that Leahua said, like, do we wanna expand it to include swag? Because I just assumed that that was already one of the things, cuz I know everyone's used their budget for swag, and so I ha- have swag for District Five because I didn't know how to use all my money, and figured if everyone else is making swag, I better make swag. But really, I don't think swag is really that impactful, like, most of it probably gets thrown away. Um, I'm not sure, I think the West Side Best Side shirts that, that Pui and Pichu have been doing actually do kind of create some I, West Side identity, and I, and I like that. Um, but I, I'm not sure that my shirts have created like District Five identity necessarily. So I think it's a lot of money that's going to things that maybe aren't as impactful, whereas if I could spend that money instead of on t-shirts that get thrown in the garbage, but building a, a concrete ping pong table, which is something that came up in my town hall yesterday, at one of the parks in District Five, that made, that may actually be used more and have a greater impact in, increasing um, things. I think we need, uh, I think we need guardrails on what it is, so I, and I think that the project that Councilmember Lopez Chavez brought forward is a great example of like, do we, can it be used for something that then gets owned privately or not? I think that's a question we have to wrestle with. But is, but it, if it's like a new amenity in a public park, or in a public library, maybe that's totally appropriate. I could also see it being used for things like, we have certain programs that aren't very equitable across the city, um, and it would be really hard to make them equitable. I'm thinking of like the Concrete Fifty-Fifty program. It's much easier for some people to pay fifty percent if they're living in an affluent neighborhood than if they're living in a less affluent neighborhood and they're living more paycheck to paycheck. So one district might say, the best use of my funds is to supplement the Concrete Fifty-Fifty program, so that residents only have to pay twenty-five percent, because that's what they could theoretically afford. So I think if there were, I just wanna at least argue that maybe there's a reason for more flexibility to, to be responsive to district needs, and as long as we're, we make public what each of our funds were used for, then constituents can use that to evaluate our decisions and decide whether or not they re-elect us, and they agree with what we have used those funds for. So I think as long as there's transparency, and then that there are some guardrails, um, it might not be a bad idea to create more, more flexibility on that.
Councilmember Pui.
Mr. Chair, I, um, obviously, I, I've been very creative on the use of, of my communications budget, uh, not only with mail, but with uh, welcome uh, letters to my new residents of my district, telling, uh, telling them about, um, telling them about, uh, when they moved into the district, uh, you know, connecting them with resources, uh, and, you know, welcoming them, uh, also, uh, creating, uh, creating other swag for the identity purposes, uh, the, you know, the West Side, Bay Side shirts, and, and some other ones, uh, to recognize in some cases incredible, uh, you know, commitment from some of the neighbors. And uh, I, I've been, uh, obviously, I advocated last, uh, a couple of years ago to increase that funding, uh, for the amount of mail that I, uh, I needed to reach out my neighbors. Um, and I, I see the benefit of that. I also, um, I also interested in, in the creativity of, of others, uh, you know, coming into the, into this, uh, these positions, uh, to use that, uh, as a tool of communicating. Uh, but I, I think the key here to me, uh, is that it is a communications budget, uh, and it has to be i- 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 it's something to communicate, something to build, something to connect us, uh, with the neighbors. And uh, to the point of the, of the idea raised a minute ago, which I think is a fantastic one too, by the way, the, uh, you know, from the art to the ping pong table, uh, uh, and anything in between, uh, i- i- there are great ideas, but we do have processes for that though. We do have CIP, we have other, o- other tools where neighbors can actually organize, uh, and apply. And certainly, they have, they have, uh, you know, bigger, they have bigger tic- ticket items, and that's, maybe that, that's a constraint, but I would like, if we're going to go this route, uh, you know, which I think it is, it's, it's worth a discussion, we should probably create a, create a process, uh, for, 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 for it, uh, and, and clearly establish guardrails. I, I worry that, uh, it could be used in a, in a bad way, and I don't think, again, like it was mentioned here, I don't think it is, uh, like, you know, uh, Councilmember Dugan mentioned, it is not about the people here right now, but maybe in the future it could be misuse, uh, by other, other, other council members. So I think it's creating a rubric and things that are allowable or not, uh, and I think I'm welcoming, welcoming this, this discussion, uh, more.
Um, Leahua.
Um, I was just gonna suggest that maybe for some of those things, there would, it kind of similar to what Councilmember Pui just mentioned, for some of those things where there could be a council interest, or a theme of things that council members want to support or promote, um, but they are either more administrative in nature, or there's a capital component to it, or even there should be like a more standardized process to apply for. or even there should be like a more standardized process to apply for those funds. There's nothing prohibiting the council from setting up a separate budget and purpose for those that would, would tag some of these transparency and fiscal procedures bases. Um, if that were something that the council wanted to do, but it didn't fit in this like community connection communications policy.
Can, can I also ask, I, I mean, this maybe begs your second question about a change in title. Because you can communicate with people in a district like mine, all you want. You can send them as many beautifully designed pamphlets and, and mailers as you want with pictures of me and whatever stock photo you've chosen, and still not engage them. They are people who don't believe that the city shows up for them because when they call the police, they don't get responses that they need, but their recycling bins get tagged if they put the wrong thing in it. And so they're, you know, the city shows up in weird places for them. Is communicating really the essence of what we're trying to do or is it actually engagement? Which also includes, of course, communicating. It's not that we're not trying to communicate to people the workings of the city, but in my case with my constituents, like those stinking like West Side Best Side shirts have gotten me into more conversations with people about everything from what the city council does that's different from what the mayor does, to when they can show up to be heard and maybe they want to be on a board in a commission, right? Like handing out a free shirt, but that shirt itself doesn't say anything about any of that. I'm not communicating through the printing of that shirt, right? So it feels to me, especially in places like mine, as I'm thinking about communication, um, is there an element of strict communication that we sometimes read into it when what we're doing is engaging or am I being too expansive with the definition here? And I'm, I'm not trying to pass a judgment on it, but it's, it, it occurs to me that those are, there's a Venn diagram, right?
Yeah, right.
Councilmember Dugan.
I think it, I think using, I think engagement and just, uh, actually in community, uh, community building, back to that building, there's a whole block, Section Four on, on Leahua's sheet about community building. The engagement is the same thing here. Cause you're right, we just don't want to buy him swag and throw it out there and send it on the TikTok thing and throw it out there. Uh, and so I, I liked the conversation, but I, back to, you know, using Leahua's straw poll chart, cause I like it is, you know, there's some areas under, now for the community building side of the house that I do have some concerns with and I, and I'm not sure where we want to go, how we want to go and, and can, uh, can, continue this conversation, but I have some concerns on a number of these items here. But I think we need to have a, a separate conversation. Maybe we have a separate conversation of each of these different blocks. Cause it's, it's going to take forever.
Yeah. Twenty minutes. What were we thinking?
Yeah.
I, yeah, I mean, I think to me what it's, what I'm hearing is that maybe we need to, uh, oh, sorry, Councilmember Pooey, you have your hand up again. All, if you want to add.
Yeah, yeah, Mr. Chair, thank you for allowing me a second chance, a, a second turn to, to add to this. Uh, I, you know, and I know that swag and the idea that, you know, the shirts or, you know, whatever we send goes to the garbage. Arguably mail is probably one of the, you know, the least efficient ways of, you know, communicating with people too, right? Like, so it does most likely goes into the recycling bin three seconds after it gets picked up, right? So I just, I want to make sure that we are, you know, measuring this, this tool, uh, and allowing some, some, some wiggle room. Uh, even if we don't think that that is the necessarily for my own, for your own district, uh, for our own districts, uh, adequate. I, uh, I will tell you though, uh, that I don't give shirts around just cause. I actually ask for their email address and I, I add them to my newsletter. And when I joined the, the council, uh, a few years back, my council had the least amount of people sign up, sign up to the, my newsletter. Uh, and that has like, I don't know if it's triple or four, or, you know, quadruple since then, but, uh, last time I checked, it was, uh, significantly bigger. Um, and, and that is the purpose of engaging and communicating. I'm, I'm not just using and throwing the swag away, uh, you know, for no purpose. Uh, I, I am trying to engage them with the work that we're doing here in the city. So again, you might, one of us might think, oh, that is a silly use of, of, of swag. Uh, but personally I think it could be used correctly.
Yeah. I, I, what I feel like I'm hearing, and I, I don't mean to speak for anybody, is that, um, it, it feels like we're, we're talking about two things, like what, how much is an appropriate amount or a reasonable amount that we should all get to do some kind of communications with our constituents, whatever we deem is most appropriate, whether that's having meetings in person or whether it's mailings or whatever. And then it sounds like there's this other element that is like, we want to be able to do more to provide funds to our district in a way that is going to be more meaningful. Um, and I guess we're not going to solve this today. Um, but it is something that we've kind of pushed off for too long and we need to, to solve soon. I just want people to think about like, is this the tool, is the commu, the council's individual communication budget the appropriate and best tool to solve these other issues that exist in the city? Um, or is there a way that, you know, cause we could all cut the budgets, um, of each of us and put that money towards CIP or any number of other programs. And we could put additional like requirements on, um, things like that about, you know, how we measure, whether there's equitable amounts going around the city. And that I think would, would be, in my view, like I'm, uh, using a tool that already exists and just providing more funding to it and providing more barrier, or more boundaries to it so that we ensure equity, rather than trying to like solve a problem with a different, you know, with, with what was once a very limited funding pool. Yes, Councilmember Young.
So a slightly different approach that I'll just put on the table. I'm wondering if, um, the council members each said, like, here are our current use cases. And then we incorporate that into the policy and then that's the policy we debate. Like in terms of like these, this, this is how we're currently using it, you know, to be able to vet, I guess, some of those, you know, decisions about where the line is being drawn. Um, I'm wondering about that as a way forward.
We could do that in small group meetings if that would be helpful.
Just to be like, here's, here's what we're currently using. And it's not to say that then the policy is reflective of the final outcome, but at least it would reflect our current practices, um, to then be able to have a conversation about, do we want to alter those practices moving forward?
Yeah, I, I would be okay with that. I just want to make sure that everybody else is okay with that because I don't want it to turn into like a, uh, singling people out or being mean or, does that make sense?
Yeah.
Okay. I'm worried that if we're like, I don't agree with how six or seven, I only agree with how I spend my money and the rest of y'all are doing it wrong.
Oh, I love that. That would be very friendly and a good way to make a new partner.
Or inversely, but like, I don't have a problem with anybody except this one policy or this one council member, how they're using it. That's what we were kind of trying to avoid with this discussion. And so we've been extra cautious about trying not to do that. And maybe I'm not understanding what you're suggesting.
Yeah. And I guess I'm not, I'm not thinking about it in terms of like listing it like D1, D2, D3, D4, but more so being like, here's how I spend it, or like, you know, here's my use cases. Can we just represent all of those in a single draft policy without calling out like district by district?
Okay.
To then be like, are there any of these that we want to put, you know, either, you know, remove or that we want to put some additional guardrails on? Cause I will say like, one of the ones that's on here.
That's totally different than what I thought.
Okay, sorry. Thank you for the opportunity to clarify. But like, you know, the thought process that it's like if you're, you know, hosting an event, do we want to be clear that it should be like non discriminatory? That speaks to me. I am like, yeah, good call. Like, you know, in terms of that. And so that's kind of what I was thinking, less a one by one and more so this draft is reflective of what we do currently.
I like that idea. I would be very comfortable going forward with that. Is, does that work for?
Sure.
Okay.
Yeah.
Excellent. So, all right. And I see that, um, Councilmember Mono, you have your hand raised. We're, we're really over time, um, but I'll give you the last comment if.
I, no, I can hold my comment. That's fine.
Okay, great. So yeah, this is not the last time we're going to have this discussion. We're going to continue it. But thank you for everybody starting it off. Um, and I think that's a great suggestion, Councilmember Young. Okay, now let's go to, um, agenda item number eight. Oh, are you kidding me? Okay, I thought we, forgot about this one. Okay. Uh, Nick, Andrew, get in, get down here. Let's.
Keep it to two minutes.
Keep it to two minutes. And yeah, cause other this, after this, remember council members, we've got, um, quite a lot of board appointments and we're having dinner with you city government. So, go ahead, councilman, or excuse me, uh, go ahead. Direct Senior Advisor, Andrew.
Just happy to be here. Thank you. Uh, council members, for those of you who've been here for a while, which you all have, um, we have an ongoing need at times for emergency shelter and you know that. Uh, oftentimes in the wintertime, we have state statute that allows shelters to expand their capacity for a certain amount of time during the winter months. That generally ends in April each year. Um, we have other shelters that over time in the city have been set up with conditional use that only allows them to use it for wintertime as well. Um, and so with the increased need for that shelter option and the identification that, uh, the state has some funding, but needs local authorization to allow providers to have expanded access to shelter beds during the summertime. Uh, we have the opportunity in the city to do temporary land use resolutions, uh, to allow those providers to continue services over the summer. Uh, in front of you have four of them, I believe. Uh, one is for St. Vincent de Paul, which is a dining hall. In the wintertime, they have a conditional use with the city that allows them to have overnight shelter, generally 7:00 PM to 7:00 AM or so. Uh, only from, uh, October until April. Uh, we are asking during this, for this temporary land use resolution to allow them to continue operations for those beds overnight. Uh, from April 16th, I believe, until, uh, October 16th, when their conditional use kicks in. We are as, also asking for two TLURs for the other homeless resource centers for single adults, uh, the Geraldine E. King and the Gail Miller, uh, that would allow them to continue with 50 additional beds each for a total capacity of 250 each from, uh, May 1st, which is when their current, um, allowance by the state runs out until, uh, November 1st essentially, um, which would allow them to go to the next winter planning process, which has a different, uh, process, obviously. And then the fourth is the Youth Resource Center, which, uh, I know a number of you have been familiar with. They are currently in the process of doing some upgrades to their building to fulfill their, uh, new conditional use, which allow them to go to 50 beds instead of 30. Uh, they haven't finished that process yet. And so their current temporary land use would expire early June. And we're asking for that to be, uh, a new one to be put in place, uh, over the summer to allow them to have that increased capacity there as well. Again, each of these, uh, temporary land use resolutions allow, uh, for up to 180 days, uh, within each of those, which is six months. That gets this from the spring until the fall until the next winter cycle. Open to questions, council members, or chair.
Then for me, anyone else?
And this is on your formal meeting.
Excellent. Great. Um, oh, guess, yes, Councilmember Mono.
I'll just say I'm supportive of this. I, and I've said this when we've done this in past years. I would be supportive of making, uh, permanent land use designation for this so that we don't have to go through and make it temporary and so that the providers can count on that if that's something that they're interested in. But just putting it on the record that I would be supportive of that.
Okay. All right. Thank you. Um, thank you. All right. Let's move on to our first board appointment, Art Design Board, Michelle Bueller. Michelle, there she is. Hi, Michelle.
Hi.
Um, so if you would, um, just tell us a little bit about yourself. Um, if you are comfortable telling us which district you're going to be representing. Um, uh, so you don't need to tell us your address or anything. Um, and, uh, what, uh, you would like to bring and what your interest is in this position.
Yeah, of course. Um, so I believe I would be representing District Number Six. And, um, just a little bit about myself. I am born and raised in Salt Lake City, Cottonwood Heights originally. Um, I lived in New York City for, um, a good portion after I graduated from the University of Utah. I studied fine art and I work in advertising, but, um, still have a really strong interest in the arts and continue to work as a, as a working artist as well. Um, but just really looking forward to contributing to the community and the art program in our community.
Okay. Any questions for, uh, Michelle? Member Dugan.
Michelle, just thank you very much. Thank you for, uh, engaging the city and, and also wanting to be part of the city art culture. So, uh, thank you very much for, uh, your participation.
Yeah, thank you.
No. Okay. All right. Thank you so much, Michelle. So, uh, we will place your name on the agenda, the consent agenda at tonight's formal meeting. Um, you need not be present to win. So, uh, but you're welcome to join us at that meeting if you, um, would like to either remotely or in person. Um, but thank you so much for your interest in this and your willingness to serve, um, Salt Lake City. We appreciate it.
All right. Thank you so much.
All right. Um, next we have, um, for Art Design Board, Weisam.
Weisam, actually.
Weisam, sorry. And can you say your last name for me as well?
Good year.
Okay, thank you. So, um, thank you for, uh, for your help with that. Please tell us, um, a little bit about yourself. Um, what, uh, your interest is in serving on the, um, Art Design Board? And then if you know like what area you're representing, that would be great. Which council member, district?
Sure. Um, so I believe I present District Number One, um, Isle of Ross Park. Uh, so I was born and raised in Iraq. I came as a refugee with my family, uh, 15 years ago. Um, I live in Ross Park for seven years right now. Uh, I study economics in Iraq and I also have my master's degree, uh, in public administration from the University of Utah. Um, I'm interested to be in a board because I want to help the board member and the artist as well to center our community voices, uh, in order to make the city reflect, uh, all the community, diversity community and make it billow for everybody. And I, I know I don't have any experience in the arts, but it's my passion to have the community voices being, uh, present in the board.
All right. Thank you so much. Any questions for Weisam? Well, Weisam, I think you heard, um, my spiel before. We'll place your name on the consent agenda items at our meeting for tonight. Um, thank you so much for your willingness to serve, um, Salt Lake City. We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Next we will go to Peanut Board, um, nominee Sarah Foran. Foran?
Hi, yep, that's correct.
Okay.
They're both.
Thank you. Would you just tell us a little bit about yourself and your, um, what area of the city you're representing and, and, um, what your interest is in serving on the Peanut Board?
For sure. Um, I'm up for the appointment at large, so.
Okay.
No one district, but I live in District Two. Um, my background is environmental engineering. Um, I have been in the public sector for about seven years and just recently moved to the private sector. Um, I've lived in Salt Lake City for just under 10 years. I got my MBA here up at the U. Um, I'm really excited for this opportunity and I appreciate you guys, uh, considering me. Um, I spend most of my time outdoors, uh, whether that's in the city or, you know, in the foothills or recreating elsewhere. Um, I've volunteered on the Women of the Wasatch, which is a local running club nonprofit, uh, to get women on trails as their community engagement board director, uh, during my last, the last rotation. So that just ended in October. Um, and this opportunity feels like the perfect combination of both my professional and recreational habits of being outside and getting other people outside and educating people on not just, you know, what is available, but what's coming. Um, I think the Peanut Board has done a lot of really exciting things and I'm very excited to, uh, contribute and help them pursue additional growth and maintain, maintaining what we already have. So.
Excellent. Thank you. Any questions for Sarah? Okay, Sarah, did you hear my spiel? Okay, great. Thank you. Uh, so yeah, placed on the consent agenda. Thank you so much for your willingness, um, to serve. Thank you so much for your willingness to serve Salt Lake City. We appreciate it. Next is Transportation Advisory Board, Kelby Gopel.
Yep, nailed it.
Oh, nice. Well, this one had a pronunciation guide, so the other ones did not. So yes, thank you. Go ahead and tell us a little bit about yourself and your interest in serving in this position.
Sure. So I live in the Glendale neighborhood, so District Two. I am a senior associate at Utah Clean Energy. It's my day job where I lead our transportation electrification programs. My background is in public health and public policy and I get really excited about local government and infrastructure. I really, you know, believe strongly that infrastructure plays an essential role in our well-being and that there are a lot of really great solutions available if we can just figure out how to implement them, especially in the transportation sector, especially considering the role that transportation plays in our air quality as well as our safety of our communities. So things like transit oriented development and safe streets, I, I think are super cool solutions. So yeah, I would be honored to support this board and support the city and, you know, working on some transportation issues. And I also do have previous board experience both with the city and in the nonprofit sector. And I've found that I really enjoy, you know, how much I can learn as part of a working board. So thank you to the council for your time.
Yeah, thank you. What board did you serve on previously?
The PCRV, the Police Civilian Review Board.
Oh, okay.
And then Utah Public Health Association is the nonprofit board.
Awesome, great. Well, thank you so much. Any other questions? Anybody have any other questions for Kelby? All right. Thank you so much. Did you hear my, my? Okay, great. Thank you and.
All good.
We appreciate it.
Thank you.
All right. Don't need a pronunciation guide for this one. Turner, because you've, you're no stranger to City Hall, so come on down. Thanks for being here. Tell us a little bit about yourself and why you're interested in serving in this position.
Thank you. So for the last five and a half years, I've served as the community council chair in the Glendale neighborhood. We're well represented tonight. And in that time, I've been able to work alongside city staff and our elected leadership on a variety of transportation projects, including the creation of an active transportation plan for our neighborhood. I'm being appointed in an at-large capacity and what I hope to do is bring some of the lessons learned and expertise that we developed in Glendale to support efforts to bring more people into our transportation planning processes citywide.
All right. Anyone have any questions for Turner?
Thank you.
Thank you. I know you've served us before too on other capacities, so thank you for your willingness to do that again. Appreciate it. Okay. Ari Tepper for Transportation Advisory Board. Is Ari online? No? No? Okay. Let's go to, never mind, that was the last one. Okay. We do have time for announcements, I guess.
Okey dokey. Let's see, we have, just for your information, packet days are shifting to Fridays during budget season and then wanting to make sure you guys know that we typically start council meetings, council work sessions at one during the budget season so that we can fit all of the information in. This one, we don't need to figure it out tonight, especially since Youth City kids are waiting, but we just wanted to flag for you that we will need to figure out who is attending the Downtown Alliance trip this year, just based on the council policy. So, Mr. Chair, I don't want to, I don't know if you want to hash that out today or if we should just bump that to May 6th.
We really need to decide it on May 6th or around that date. So if you're interested in attending the Downtown Alliance urban exploration trip, please let us know. Okay, what, I didn't mean right now, but okay. So Councilmember Young said no. And everyone else, if you'll just let staff know, if you could text Jennifer, Leahuah or myself tonight and say whether you're interested, that would be great. Okay. So I, I think that's all we have. So Youth City Government is here, are they in the Cannon Room? Okay. So, all right, let's head down. Thanks, everybody.